Huh? What's the official clock? Is it that one or ours?
I think it's the saddle one.
Yeah. Okay. It's, uh, April the first, twenty twenty five, and I'll call and order the special closed session meeting at the Attorney City Council. Comments are limited to items to be discussed in closed sessions. Speaker will be allowed three minutes each per item. For those that wish to provide public comment while not physically in attendance, you may call five five nine. That would be one five five nine, three six six, one six four nine. Please note that there will be approximately a twenty second, twenty second delay in broadcast for viewers. When calling in, mute the device you use for viewing the meeting. And now we will recess to closed session. And if council will advise us.
Yes, we are recessing a closed session for our conference with labor negotiators. Uh, the agency designated representatives are city manager Mark Mondell, city attorney Mario Zamora, human resources director Sean O'Neil. The employee organizations are Clocia, Tulare City Professional Firefighters Association non-management and Tulare City Professional Firefighters Association management and unrepresented employees Tulare Fire Battalion Chief Group.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Then I will adjourn closed session. Now call to order the April 1st, 2025 rigorant meeting in the Tulare City Council. And it is April 1st, and this is not an April Fool's joke. I'm not the mayor. He's not here, so I'm filling in for tonight for him. We will have the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Bender and in our invocation by Louis Sparks. Would you please raise, rise for the pledge?
Please join me in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought maybe I should begin praying for all of you with this five-page agenda, but maybe we'll get to that. Let's pray. Oh, wise man, much wiser than I, said we should do it this way. You can join me if you like. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debts, as we forgive our debtors, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Thank you. Next item will be proclamations and recognition. We have one proclamation that will be handed out by Councilmember Sayer. This will be for National Library Week, so.
Whereas libraries spark creativity, fuel imagination, and inspire lifelong learning, offering a space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities. And whereas libraries serve as vibrant community hubs, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources, while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong learning. And whereas libraries provide free and equitable access to books, digital tools, and innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals, regardless of background, have the support they need to learn, connect, and thrive. And whereas libraries partner with schools, businesses, and organizations, connecting the dots to maximize resources, increase efficiency, and expand access to essential services, strengthening the entire community. And whereas libraries empower job seekers, entrepreneurs, and lifelong learners by providing access to resources, training, and opportunities that support career growth and economic success. And whereas dedicated librarians and library workers provide welcoming spaces that inspire discovery, collaboration, and creativity for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers across the country are joining together to celebrate National Library Week under the theme Drawn to the Library. Now therefore, we the city council of the city of Tulare do hereby proclaim the week of April 6 through 12th, 2025, as National Library Week in the city of Tulare and encourage all residents to visit their library, explore its resources, and celebrate all the ways that the library draws us together as a community dated this first day of April 2025.
All right. Well, thank you very much. It is always my pleasure to be here in this forum for this. The library has been my home now in Tulare for thirty or thirty-plus years. So libraries have been part of my life for all of my life, really. I want to invite you this weekend as a kickoff to our libraries, National Library Week. On Saturday is our annual garden festival. This is one of our community partnerships with the master gardeners Tulare Kings County. And that will be out in the general open area, the Saturday from ten to two. So if you have questions about gardening and stuff, you might want to check that out. We've got a lot of our city partners are going to show up for us at that one and some of our other community partners. So that's going on. At two o'clock on Saturday afternoon, if you are a movie fan, we will be playing Wicked. It'll be right here. So you've got that opportunity as well. And you can check out our calendar online on the city's website or on the library's website and see all the other wonderful things we're doing this month.
I have to add a little bit that the Tulare City Library, the name of it, and Heidi go hand in hand. This library would not be what it is without Heidi. Next on the agenda will be public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from acting on any matter not on the agenda. However, your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This is also the time for the public to comment on items listed under the consent counter or to request an item from the consent counter to be pulled for discussion purposes. Comments related to the public hearing and general business items will be heard at this time, at the time those items are discussed. In fairness to all who wish to speak, public comment is limited to a total of fifteen minutes with each speaker allowed three minutes unless otherwise extended by a council. Please begin your comments by stating your name and providing your city of residence. For those that wish to provide public comment while viewing the meeting online, you may call 1-559-366-1849. Please note that there will be approximately a twenty-second delay in broadcast for viewers when calling, when calling in. Mute the device used for viewing the meeting. And I believe the first one was Councilmember Sayer.
I'm acting as Darnette Silver Carter, the CEO of the Tulare Chamber, and she wanted me to remind you that this Saturday is Cars on K, which is really an amazing event that occurs in our city each year, and that pre-registered is a hundred-plus cars already. So it should be a really wonderful. And I forgot to write down what time it starts. Does anybody know? Probably nine o'clock? Yeah, be there at nine o'clock.
Yeah. I have a yellow card for Ken Espinoza.
My name is Ken Espinoza. I reside here in the city of Tulare. It is my adopted home. I'm not originally from here. Vice Mayor Harrell, councilman, and city manager. I have one simple question, and it is, are we going to abandon that Cyclum next-gen travel center project because of the money situation and with the tax situation and with all these other projects we've got going in town that seem to be running over budget? And if I'm incorrect, I'd like to know where I can get the information on what the real figures are. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, am I correct? That's the seed money that we have to put up front?
I'm happy to address the question of council.
Yeah. So I'm not sure what you were talking about, all the projects going over budget. I'm not aware of a single project going over budget. And in terms of that project, that is a private sector project. So they're putting all the money in to develop the project. What the city's putting into the project is a structural evaluation of Medford Hangar. And the reason for that is because we have heard from our citizenry that they would like us to try to save Medford Hangar. In order to do that, we have to have a structural analysis. So whether we were working with Cyclum or not, we would need to do that structural analysis. That's underway. We also have to do an environmental analysis of the footprint and of the structure itself, not of the entire site. Again, if we were to save Medford Hangar for whatever the use would be, we would have to do an environmental assessment of Medford Hangar with or without Cyclum. So those are two costs that we would have no matter what. The seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's a net agreement, which I'm happy to share with you, they like to see. That is only what the city would have an obligation to spend up to should we determine that the hangar was salvageable and should we determine we were going to move forward with Cyclum to renovate the hangar for some other purpose and use. That decision hasn't been made yet. The first two studies have to be completed. We have to continue to work with Cyclum to go through the process to understand what their project will entail in its totality. Right now, they're looking at leasing, or they have leased the twenty-six acres for a travel center, a little bit as you've described. And so they're going, they're starting to go through the entitlement and site plan review process for that now. The city won't spend a dime beyond the structural analysis and the environmental assessment on that hangar until we know Cyclum's putting all their money into the project. So once we know it's a certain project, that's when we would consider putting those dollars in. And the reason we put it, it doesn't necessarily mean that it will be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but it won't be more than seven hundred and fifty. And if we come back and we determine that it's going to cost more than that, that'll come back to council and council will decide if it decides, you know, if it wants to do that or not. So that's where the project stands.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mendez.
Hey, good evening, city council and cabinet members as well as community. We're here to share another concern that has occurred once again on Brentwood and Cross Street. And this is off of Cross going towards Brentwood. Virtually, there was a vehicle, a semi truck that passed by and crashed into a truck that was parked there. And then another vehicle, that truck crashed into our neighbor's property, to their home, and then continued crashing to a bush, their property, and then into our fence, our backyard fence. As you can see, that's our vehicle there that was also parked and it got overturned to the side. It's totaled. We have the semi which continued on the pathway. Luckily, as far as we're aware, you know, there were no fatalities or major injuries. But it is a serious concern because of the amount of people, children, ourselves as well, that exercise and that walk through that sidewalk. And, you know, we want the city to take this with a sense of urgency just because it's very, very serious, as you can see there. You know, in addition to this, previously, there was two occasions in 2024, one in February and one in September, where a vehicle, two vehicles, separate situations, crashed through our fence, pretty much through the same trajectory, and landed in our swimming pool. You know, once again, luckily, no one was hurt or injured.
Entrepreneurs and lifelong learners by providing access to resources, training, and opportunities that support career growth and economic success. And whereas dedicated librarians and library workers provide welcoming spaces that inspire discovery, collaboration, and creativity for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers across the country are joining together to celebrate National Library Week under the theme Drawn to the Library. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Tulare, do hereby proclaim the week of April 6 through 12, 2025, as National Library Week in the City of Tulare and encourage all residents to visit their library, explore its resources, and celebrate all the ways that the library draws us together as a community dated this first day of April 2025.
Well, thank you very much. It is always my pleasure to be here in this forum for this. The library has been my home now in Tulare for thirty or thirty-plus years. So libraries have been part of my life for all of my life, really. I want to invite you this weekend as a kickoff to our libraries, National Library Week. On Saturday is our annual garden festival. This is one of our community partnerships with the master gardeners Tulare Kings County. And that will be out in the general open area, the Saturday from ten to two. So if you have questions about gardening and stuff, you might want to check that out. We've got a lot of our city partners are going to show up for us at that one and some of our other community partners. So that's going on. At two o'clock on Saturday afternoon, if you are a movie fan, we will be playing Wicked. We'll be right here. So you've got that opportunity as well. And you can check out our calendar online on the city's website or on the library's website and see all the other wonderful things we're doing this month.
Thank you.
I have to add a little bit that the Tulare City Library, the name of it, and Heidi go hand in hand. This library would not be what it is without Heidi. Next on the agenda will be public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the City Council at this time. State law prevents council from acting on any matter not on the agenda. However, your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This is also the time for the public to comment on items listed under the consent calendar or to request an item from the consent calendar to be pulled for discussion purposes. Comments related to the public hearing and general business items will be heard at this time, at the time those items are discussed. In fairness to all who wish to speak, public comment is limited to a total of fifteen minutes with each speaker allowed three minutes unless otherwise extended by a council. Please begin your comments by stating your name and providing your city of residence. For those that wish to provide public comment while viewing the meeting online, you may call 1-559-366-1849. Please note that there will be approximately a twenty-second delay in broadcast for viewers when calling, when calling in. Mute the device used for viewing the meeting. And I believe the first one was Councilmember Sarah.
I'm acting as Darnette Silver Carter, the CEO of the Tulare Chamber. And she wanted me to remind you that this Saturday is Cars on K, which is really an amazing event that occurs in our city each year, and that pre-registered is a hundred-plus cars already. So it should be a really wonderful. And I forgot to write down what time it starts. Does anybody know? Probably nine o'clock? Yeah, be there at nine o'clock.
Okay. Yeah. I have a yellow card for Ken Espinoza.
My name is Ken Espinoza. I reside here in the city of Tulare. It is my adopted home. I'm not originally from here. Vice Mayor Harrell, Councilman, and City Manager. I have one simple question, and it is, are we going to abandon that Cyclum Next Gen Travel Center project because of the money situation and with the tax situation and with all these other projects we've got going in town that seem to be running over budget? And if it's, if I'm incorrect, I'd like to know where I can get the information on what the real figures are. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, am I correct? That's the seed money that we have to put up front?
I'm happy to address the question of council. Yeah, so I'm not sure what you were talking about, all the projects going over budget. I'm not aware of a single project going over budget. And in terms of that project, that is a private sector project. So they're putting all the money into develop the project. What the city's putting into the project is a structural evaluation of Medford Hangar. And the reason for that is because we have heard from our citizenry that they would like us to try to save Medford Hangar. In order to do that, we have to have a structural analysis. So whether we were working with Cyclum or not, we would need to do that structural analysis. That's underway. We also have to do an environmental analysis of the footprint and of the structure itself, not of the entire site. Again, if we were to save Medford Hangar for whatever the use would be, we would have to do an environmental assessment of Medford Hangar with or without Cyclum. So those are two costs that we would have no matter what. The seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's a net agreement, which I'm happy to share with you, they like to see, that is only what the city would have an obligation to spend up to should we determine that the hangar was salvageable and should we determine we were going to move forward with Cyclum to renovate the hangar for some other purpose in use? That decision hasn't been made yet. The first two studies have to be completed. We have to continue to work with Cyclum to go through the process to understand what their project will entail in its totality. Right now, they're looking at leasing, or they have leased the twenty-six acres for a travel center, a little bit as you've described. And so they're going, they're starting to go through the entitlement and site plan review process for that now. The city won't spend a dime beyond the structural analysis and the environmental assessment on that hangar until we know Cyclum's putting all their money into the project. So once we know it's a certain project, that's when we would consider putting those dollars in. And the reason we put a, it doesn't necessarily mean that it will be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but it won't be more than seven hundred and fifty. And if we come back and we determine that it's going to cost more than that, that'll come back to council and council will decide if it decides, you know, if it wants to do that or not. So that's where the project stands.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mendez.
Good evening, City Council and Cabinet members as well as community. We're here to share another concern that has occurred once again on Brentwood and Cross Street. And this is off of Cross, going towards Brentwood. Unfortunately, there was a vehicle that, a semi truck that passed by and crashed into a truck that was parked there. And then another vehicle, that truck crashed into our neighbor's property, into their home, and then continued crashing to a bush, their property, and then into our fence, our backyard fence. As you can see, that's our vehicle there that was also parked and it got overturned to the side. It's totaled. We have the semi which continued on the pathway. Luckily, as far as we're aware, you know, there were no fatalities or major injuries. But it is a serious concern because of the amount of people, children, ourselves as well that exercise and that walk through that sidewalk. And, you know, we want the city to take this with a sense of urgency just because it's very, very serious, as you can see there. You know, in addition to this, previously, there was two occasions in 2024, one in February and one in September, where a vehicle, two vehicles, separate situations, crashed through our fence, pretty much through the same trajectory, and landed in our swimming pool. You know, once again, luckily, no one was, was hurt or injured in that occasion, but it could have been like, could have been devastating consequences for people who were walking there, if we were in our backyard, people are exercising, our children going to school or going to and from their, their house. You know, so we have, we have submitted recommendations via email to the city, a couple recommendations. We did notice that there was some, yeah, we would like, we would, we will recommend, like, ask the city and city manager, anyone associated with the Public Works in City of Tulare, to please put like, consider putting a guardrail there, you know, that can absorb the impact there of those vehicles. Because this time it was a semi. And I know in some, I know in some cities, there are signs that through residential areas, they don't allow like semis or commercial vehicles with certain weights going, going through residential areas. One for safety, main reasons for safety, but other reasons that can damage the infrastructure in terms of the water pipes, gas lines, and so forth over time. But maybe a guardrail, that would be greatly appreciated in terms of safety. You know, we want to make sure that, that the pathway is safe for everyone, including the residents of Tulare and people who exercise and walk along, along those pathways.
Hello, my name is Brian Galvan. And we came with my family because we were concerned this happened for the third time. And this time it was a semi, unfortunately. And if it wasn't for the truck, you know, those Chevy Silverados are pretty heavy, they're big trucks. We were actually inside the home and our gardener, gardeners do their, their yard as well. And they were working on that house and luckily, like, they didn't get struck. But the guy told me, like, I had just finished, like, mowing that front lawn. Like, if it wasn't for that, like, a couple minutes, I would have got hit. And, I mean, we're, we're concerned because my mom, like, she wakes up sometimes, like, in the night, like, like, if she hears, like, a car, like, just speeding or anything. And it's, it's, it's difficult. I mean, we're proposing a guardrail. I did some research by, this is, this is by the U.S. Department of Transportation. And a guardrail is first and foremost a safety barrier to intend to shield a motorist who has left the roadway. It says, right here, it says, "In those cases, when the consequences of striking a guardrail would be less severe than striking other objects next to the roadway. Guardrails should be installed. They can make roads safer and lessen the severity of the crashes. The guardrails can operate deflect a vehicle back to the roadway. Slow the vehicle down to a complete stop or certain circumstances, circumstances, slow the vehicle down, then let it proceed past the guardrail." I was also speaking to my, to our neighbor, and I don't know if you have the picture where it hit the, the house, that same room, their grandchild, grandchild plays in that room. She said that he wasn't there, but she, he's always playing in that room. And just seeing that, just something like, just the wrong timing, a kid can be playing there and, you know, a semi, it, it can cause greater damage. So we are concerned and we would like to see if, if something can be done to put a guardrail or something that can, can help the situation because I know you guys put previously, like, I think some signs. It, it was just one sign and it, it's, it's very small. Sometimes cars, cars park in front of it and you barely see on top of a car, like, it's, it's hard for people to see it. And at this point, I think it would be safer to put a guardrail just to protect our neighbors and us from, from any major causes. Also, my sister, she was in the backyard and she had just left to the store, but if it wasn't for those cars, that semi would have gone inside and my sister was there. So it's pretty concerning. Yeah, thank you.
Council, if I could just speak to this for just a second. This is no doubt a challenging issue and one that staff takes seriously. It's not one that we're ignoring or not wanting to deal with. I just want to make sure you have an understanding, a little bit of what we're dealing with. So that radius is about a two-thousand-foot radius and that design would support speeds of up to sixty miles per hour. It's posted as forty-five miles an hour. So what you have is a situation where either people are speeding beyond sixty miles an hour, they're not, and/or they're not operating the vehicle correctly, i.e. they're texting, they're falling asleep, they're not paying attention, otherwise impaired. Otherwise, their vehicle and a, and a driver who has passed the licensure requirement should be able to handle that curb without a problem. Obviously, there's not. We are having problems out there. I have dealt with this issue. And we have a couple other places in the city where we have similar, not exactly like this, where you have radius issues, but I'll give you example, Turner and Foster. We have situations where people ignore stop signs, go through stop signs, and crash into the people's front yard. And so these are all very difficult situations to resolve because normally, the solution is extraordinarily expensive in terms of redesigning roadways and construct, like at Turner and Foster, we're talking about redesigning that ultimately because it's part of the large arterial system for the city and building a roundabout. And so they don't happen overnight and they're not simple solutions. There's things the city really shouldn't do, like installing bollards out in the street, right? Now, all of a sudden, the city taxpayers take on all the liability of running checks for those lawsuits when people crash into them. We can take it back again if council would like and talk about guardrails. I know when I've dealt with this in other communities, citizens that own those homes typically have not wanted guardrails because when they tried to sell the home, people go out in front and say, "There's a guardrail in front of your property. Is there a problem here?" And so it could have packed either valuations or resale value. What I have seen citizens do in other communities, and I'm not trying to push this on a citizen, we're just trying to talk about all potential solutions. I have, you know, I wouldn't advise citizens necessarily put bollards in their yards themselves, but what I have seen citizens do is put large boulders as part of landscaping elements. So if a vehicle does come through, they have a nice, desert scape landscaping, they've got stones and rocks and shrubbery, et cetera. And a vehicle would hit that and deflect from that before it would come to the house. I'm not saying that's what you should do or that's the only solution. I'm just saying I have seen that as a solution that doesn't expose the city to greater liability or the property owner, and it doesn't somehow, in the eyes of a property owner, diminish, theoretically diminish their marketability of their property. So if the property owners introduce a guardrail, I mean, we can go back, I don't think it meets Caltrans standards, so we'll have to talk about the liability of the city doing that, but we can go back and brainstorm some other ideas and give you a report on what we think. I don't think, Michael, we've had an engineer, a separate third-party engineer look at this or any kind of traffic study done there because it doesn't, it wouldn't typically warrant it because it meets the speed, the design parameters for the speed. Obviously, enforcement is a great solution. We have limited availability to have cops posted out there at all hours of the day. We can run duties out there to try to remind people to slow down, and we could certainly do that. But we'll bring it back and try to come up with other solutions.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question for the City Manager. Is there a process, or maybe, Michael, is there a process for that? Because I know, I've seen homes as well that they put in the, I guess, pipes for bollards. Bollards, yeah. So is there a process for that? I mean, do people have to go get a permit somewhere and then install them and, or they just pop up overnight, type of thing?
As long as they aren't located within the city right-of-way, they don't need a permit to install them.
So technically, inside their fence line, they can, they can put some of, something like that.
Yes, or big boulders or.
Inside the fence, without permit.
Jose, the best example of what they're talking about is the northwest corner of Prosperity and Oak.
Yeah, that's the one, I didn't want to call them out, but that's the one I was thinking about. They do, so they do have them in their property. They don't need a permit, just, then go ahead and, okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go back and brainstorm on other potentials. I mean, maybe there's things we can do downstream from the house a little bit that gets people to slow down. You know, we're really hesitant installing, we, you see some other communities install speed bumps in areas, but the challenge again with speed bumps is, you know, you get somebody out there who's not paying attention, who's speeding, who's drunk, hits a speed bump, and now they've elevated and they're in the air and they crash into a house and, you know, speed bump's not warranted, it doesn't meet Caltrans standards, and the city's writing a check. So we're trying to come up with a solution that doesn't create even other collateral damage. So please don't, don't misinterpret anything I'm saying as if we don't care. We care, we just are struggling finding out a solution that the city can come up with. I want to encourage you to consider some other alternatives we've also discussed tonight.
We currently do, we currently do have some posts that were built inside the, the home. And the second accident, it, it went through it and it still went into the pool. And the first accident, it knocked two, like, mature palm trees. So it's, and, and two of the, well, the third one was suspected to be under the influence. And then the, the first one was under the influence. So we're like in a situation where it's difficult, like, to see what we put, we can put. Maybe you can try boulders, but even then, we don't know, like, if, if there's something that can be done through the city. Or my mom's here, she's asking or seeing if there's a way that the city would be able to put, like, maybe, I don't know, some better ones, like, posts, like, in our homes? Like, I don't know if that's a situation, I don't think it is, but we're just looking for alternatives for, to just, to be safe for, for us and our neighbors as well. It's a pretty big concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Court, do we have anybody on the phone? No? Okay. Right, being right along, communications, anything from?
No communications.
Council reports and items of interest, Mr. Segala.
Just briefly, I wanted to, to mention that I appreciate the staff's support this last week or since the last council meeting. I was able to attend the International Conference of Shopping Centers, which was held in Monterey. I was very proud to represent the city. And this is a, this is an opportunity for cities and staff and council and other elected officials to work with a number of folks to try to attract businesses and, and talk about the important work that we're doing in the city of Tulare. It was very great to, to have that recognition by a number of developers and retail folks. And so I did have a conversation with our city manager about some potential leads, look forward to our future Economic Development Director, working as well to try to continue to, to let folks know that Tulare is a great place to come and set up a business, to, to invest in. And so I thank the city for the opportunity to do that. I did attend some great workshops and I learned a lot. Hopefully, that will help us towards our economic development goals that we have in our city and to be able to try to retain, I mean, attract more businesses here locally to provide jobs and amenities that our, our city folks are looking for. So thank you.
Councilmember Sarah.
I was able to attend several events within the city. The Historical Society had a, a Bunko Evening to support the society. We went to the healthcare, new healthcare facility for their ribbon cutting. We had a strategic planning session, which was really helpful. Also went to Melissa Hurtado Swearingen at COS, the small dental, Smile Dental, new facility near Denny's had their ribbon cutting. And then Saturday, I participated in an event called the Enchanted Evening, where two hundred and twenty-two high school girls were able to have, choose prom dresses at no cost to them and be able to attend their high school proms.
Councilwoman Maderas.
I'll pass for the sake of time.
On the nineteenth, I attended the employee healthcare opening, twenty-first strategic planning session. And I did arrive at Senator Hurtado Swearingen, but it was a little bit late. During the last couple weeks, I met with local businesses regarding purchasing policy of the city, businesses regarding Zaputo Plant and some issues out there, and talked to some developers about some issues. Next item on the agenda will be the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted in one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Anything to be pulled from the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that thirteen point eight and thirteen point eleven be removed from the consent calendar for just a couple of questions. And I think my understanding is that twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, fifteen are also by staff requested to, to remove from consent calendar?
Yes, twelve through fifteen.
So, so then, then thirteen point eight and then thirteen point eleven through fifteen.
I'd request thirteen point three and thirteen point six. Get pulled.
Then, Mr. Mayor, if there are no other members wishing to pull the consent calendar, then I would move to adopt consent calendars, items thirteen point one, thirteen point two, point four, point five, point seven, point nine, and point ten.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is five zero, four zero, I'm sorry. Thirteen point three.
Reason I pulled this, I just wanted to get clarification and also specifically have it publicly said, we have a lot of streets here that are in need of, of the rubberized pavement grant program rehabilitation. I guess it would be you, Tricia, that would explain this. But I'm glad to see Quayle Drive, Alene Street, Finch Avenue, Cedro Street, and especially Boyer Drive, which I know years ago, when I first ran for office, I knocked on doors in that area, and the first question was, can you do anything about this street? And unfortunately, I haven't been able to do that, but now it appears that I'm part of something that's going to allow this to occur, if you would.
Yes, you are correct. So we applied for a grant through CalRecycle for the rubberized chip seal. So the three sites that have the asterisks in your transmittal were the streets that we identified in the grant. Finance was able to find us more money. So since we have to bid the project, we're going to get some economies of scale. So we added the other two sites, the area of Washington, Mark Twain, Dickens, Mitchell, Hemingway, and Alcott. And then also in Del Lago, I'm sure you've gotten complaints on these streets, Champagne, Benelli Court, York Mountain Court, Firestone, Arneus, Malveja, and Cortez Street. So we added those two locations just because we had additional funding. So if the council approves this, we will accept the grant and go out to bid for this project and hopefully get it done this spring.
Site three, is that just east of Del Lago?
Yes.
Lake, that whole area right in there?
Yeah, Firestone comes off of, I think, is it Del Avinia? And it's just, it's in bad shape. And then you take those streets off of it and they're in really bad shape.
This is the area where you and I talked about phone calls we were getting.
Yes, we've been getting complaints in that area as well.
Good, good. How, how soon will this take place? Do you have any?
We pretty much have the bid spec ready to go. So once council approves, it'll probably take us a couple of weeks to get the bid spec. We've already talked to a few vendors. Our timing is right, we're getting in early. So it, it has to get hot enough to do this project, you can't do it while it's cold. So probably within the next month, I'm hoping we're out to bid. And just another note from the transmittal, they don't recommend doing this product, product in cul-de-sacs because the garbage trucks and, like, campers and RVs tear it up with their turn radius. So street staff will go in and do those cul-de-sacs separate, we will mill and overlay those. So our budget includes milling and overlay the cul-de-sac. So you won't see the contractor do those, we'll do those pieces separate.
Well, in order to not have any further delay, I'll make a motion to adopt consent item thirteen point three.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt thirteen point three. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Pass is four to zero. Next item, section.
Thirteen point six.
Section.
The reason I pulled this is just clarification, and, and I guess this would come from you, Michael, on, where, where the estimated cost of these park improvements is two hundred and sixty-nine thousand. I, I discussed it with Mark and gave me an explanation, but, you know, this is the equivalent of ninety-nine lots. I, I was trying to figure out, it's coming from the general fund and there'll be a reimbursement when it's, when, under the Quimby Act, when it's, I, I wasn't grasping it fully, and that's my ignorance as opposed to anybody else. I'm sure Mr. Nunnely understands this, but, but I don't have knowledge like he does on items like this. So if you could explain that.
Thank you, Mr. Maderas. So the, the proposal is that the, the developer dedicated this park space to be developed into a community park. The costs of developing community parks are not part of our Development Impact Fee Program, but they are covered. but they are covered by the Quimby Act ordinance that, uh, council recently adopted. At the time that this dedication was made and this, this map was processed, the, the Quimby or Act ordinance had not been adopted. So what we are proposing to do is to, the developers willing to develop the park, put in all the amenities and be reimbursed through development impact fee parks credits. And since it's not eligible to be ultimately reimbursed through development impact fee program, what we'll do is we'll go back and make the development impact fee program poll using general fund dollars. And then as Quimby Act revenue comes in from future developments, we can pay back the general fund out of that.
Okay, so eventually we'll get there through the fees that are being held, so, okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I think on this one I had, I, I did get a map of what the park would look like, so do you guys have that, just so that we get an idea?
We have that here, yeah.
Yeah.
Pull that up.
Cause I did ask some kind of similar questions, but I also wanted to get an idea of where the park would be, given that I got a little confused with the future agenda item that we'll be talking about, so I know staff had, uh, and, uh, sent out a.
Just give us a second.
Yeah. To get an idea.
So it's the, the area in green?
Right.
And then you, one of the questions that was asked is, is it, um, is it replacing the commercial site? And the answer is no, if you look up at the top of that image on the upper right inside, it says future commercial, so it it has a future commercial, commercial component and it has a park component.
So I guess for the park staff or whoever can answer this, in terms of that, that park site there, is that considered a neighborhood park? Is that, is that kind of like the on this kind of development, is that an adequate space for the park, uh?
I would defer to the, the community development director.
Oh, sorry, Maury.
This would be considered more of a pocket park. Um, this was before Quimby Act came into effect, so you know, we didn't have really strict standards, uh, like we do now, where it's it's much clearer what the dedication requirement is for each subdivision going forward.
So under, under Quimby, uh, if this were under Quimby, the park technically would be a little bit bigger?
The required dedication, I would assume, would be, I'd, I'd have to do the calculation to, to confirm that, but just from from my guess, it, it looks like it's, uh, a little undersized.
This, this was essentially a, a negotiated settlement.
Right, cause it looks like, I, I remember years ago, I think, I think when, uh, council, uh, council member Jones was on the council, there were so it's a few kind of a development where they, we kind of, here in council, got the developer to put together a few more lots to increase the park. So this one is particularly, um, yeah, just trying to see what would fit on that pocket park, but okay, that, that was a question. See if that was adequate for, for the development.
This is somewhat like Sarah Park? I was waiting for you to say that, but is that accurate?
You'll have a minute.
I'm not as familiar with, do you remember the size of Sarah Park, but it's essentially?
It is a pocket park.
Okay, in terms of the classification, yeah.
Maury, you haven't been to Sarah Park?
I have, I just don't remember the.
Really, I'm insulted.
I think it might be a little larger, but yes, it also is a pocket park.
Okay, that's correct.
Okay, that being said, uh, if Mr. Vice Mayor, if there's no further questions, I'll make a motion to adopt, uh, item thirteen point six.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to adopt thirteen point six, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing four to zero.
Right, uh, well, oh, to consider precedent, I'll refer to is Mr. Mayor for today. Um, so Mr. Mayor, council, on this one, uh, just, uh, obviously it's a request to increase, uh, our contract with, uh, Fort Creeks for, uh, management and inspection of the Zuma Park construction for the amount that stated on, in the agenda staff report. I guess my question, and I did talk to, uh, the city manager about this, but I just kind of wanted to take this opportunity because, um, I've been getting a lot of calls and people have been asked about the park and so maybe take this opportunity just to give us an update as to where the park is, I know we, we love the rain, like we have had today and the last couple of days, but that obviously continues to add to to the delay of the, of the park and so just to be, want to give an update.
Yeah, so, you know, um, Mike, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, uh, but, you know, we're all excited about it and we all wanted it to be done sooner. Um, you know, the contractor, no one more than the contractor, frankly, right, cause it costs them money, uh, when they're not finishing the project, but we were hoping the project was gonna be done in November, it got pushed into January and then February. The biggest problem or challenge we've had has been, uh, as we have in, not just us, but I would say the whole nation, frankly, in terms of getting projects completed, which is the electrical switchgear. Uh, electrical switchgear is sort of a critical path item, in other words, if you don't have all the electrical for the facility installed where you can energize the entire site, it gets kind of challenging in terms of being able to finish certain items, so for example, if you don't have the space conditioned on the inside of the space, right, and you start installing the carpeting and the cabinetry and, and some of the finishes, if you're not controlling in particular the moisture content, the humidity layer, level inside the space, uh, you might start getting warping and you might start getting things happening inside the building that's a problem, right? So if you follow the way it's supposed to go and install the electrical and the AC's working and you install those things, then the contractor warranties all those finishes and that product for a year. If you don't, uh, and you tell the contractor, go ahead, you're waiving your right to that warranty essentially, and so we really haven't wanted to re- relinquish any of our rights in terms of our warranty, and so we've been waiting for the switchgear, it was installed maybe a month ago now, Michael, is that?
Not even quite a month.
Not even quite a month yet, yeah. So now that has triggered other things starting to happen more quickly, so our hope is that they will be finished by the end of May, I don't know that they will be finished by the end of May. Uh, we have a couple of events planned in May, we have the first concert on the twenty-third and the ribbon cutting on the twenty-fourth. They will relinquish the site to us for those events, like we did when we had the first few events last year. Our hope is that it'll be finished. Michael, I, I know it could extend into June, have, you have an update on the, on the timeframe for construction yet, do you know?
Uh, we're still shooting for that, uh, May twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Um, obviously, there's probably gonna be some, some cleanup things, some punch list items that carry on beyond that. But, uh, just today we found out they scheduled the, uh, uh, the manufacturer to come out and do training and install inspection on the splash pad for the twenty-third of May, so.
So that's a good sign. And I, and I want to give a little kudos to Southern California Edison here. Um, originally Edison had indicated it would take about ten to twelve weeks after the switchgear was installed for them to energize the site. You know, we reached out to them, the contractor reached out to them and they're extraordinarily busy, but they came in much sooner. I think they gave us a two to three week turnaround time to get out to the site, which has already occurred now. And so, you know, we're, everyone's doing what they can and, and we're, we're trying to recognize the things that are within their control and the matters that are outside of their control.
Great, well, thank you, there's no other questions from council, thank you for that update. Um, I'd like to move to adopt, uh, item thirteen point eight.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve thirteen point eight. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four to zero.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, the next one that I had requested is thirteen point eleven and I just want to thank the city manager and staff for, uh, providing me an update. Uh, uh, this particular item has the number of capital improvement projects throughout the city, it's an update, uh, dashboard update for April. Uh, they has a number of street improvement projects, uh, just a number of things that we're doing. And in particular, uh, the project that, uh, I think has been become familiar to our council and our staff has been the streetlight, uh, installation, uh, in Prosperity and West. And so I had asked our city manager and staff to provide an update. Um, on the last conversation we had about that was, uh, idea of trying to retain some, uh, right of way, I guess, uh, aerial right of way, I believe. And so just wanted to, um, get an update on, uh, I think the last we had was that the city attorney would look into the situation and then determine about bringing a resolution of necessity if needed, and so I just wanted to give the opportunity to give an update, I did get the update, but I know people have been asking about that as well, so thank you.
Sure, so we, uh, we, you, uh, council had, you know, requested that we move forward with the resolution of necessity for the taking of the right of way. Uh, in order to do that, there's a process and procedure you have to go through, Michael, would you kind of share with us what that is and where that's at in the process?
Sure, sure, so before we can do a resolution of necessity, we have to make an offer, a formal offer to the property owner and give them thirty days, I believe it is, to either accept or um, more likely they could, uh, request, uh, an appraise, a second appraisal of their own. Um, the big delay has been in writing the easement documentation, basically spelling out exactly what it is that we're trying to acquire. Um, initially, we thought we were acquiring just straight right of way for Edison's purposes. They came back and said, no, we don't need right of way, we need a specific over, overhang easement. So then that went back and forth and we're dealing not only with Edison, but they have a private, uh, company that deals with their right of way issues. So it's like three individuals trying to work on the same issue. And we finally got that resolved, got the wording correct for the the easement that Edison needs and provided that to the right of way consultant. So now, currently it stands with the right of way consultant to prepare the final offer to the property owner. And, uh, we've told them that, you know, we, we want to be able to come back to council. Um, I believe it was the first meeting in May with a resolution of necessity, so that's the timeline they need to meet for us.
Great, well, thank you very much for that update, uh, unless there's any other questions from other councilmembers, then I'd like to move that.
I've got a question.
Sorry, Mr. Maderas.
Michael, are there any other foreseeable delays that we're gonna face once we get to this point? Cause it seems like every time we think we're there, something else pops up, I mean.
We, we did have another one, but it's not gonna affect the, the timeline beyond what this right of way acquisition is. Um, there is an existing drop inlet, storm drain drop inlet at the north, northernmost property on West Street, um, that currently discharges to the TID canal. Um, we thought that we were grandfathered into having the rights to continue to use that drop inlet and discharge the roadway drainage there and TID informed us that, no, we do not. Uh, that was actually a drop inlet that was installed by the property owner without their permission. So we're having to switch things up and we're gonna put in a, um, a dry well, basically. Instead of having it connect to the TID pipe, but that's already, that's gonna be a quick, easy redesign and shouldn't impact the schedule beyond the right of way acquisition.
And also on this item, before we, uh, approve it, I saw where, uh, and I don't know exactly, well, well, one thing on page eight, um, the Bella Oaks is actually in District Four, not District Five, it's indicated. And the, the other question I had was it appears that the railroad project at Jay and, and, uh, Prosperity? Am I reading that right, that that's not gonna happen?
That's correct. Um, well into the design process, Union Pacific Railroad surprised us with, um, notification that, oh, if you're modifying the existing crossing at Prosperity and Jay Street, that's going to require modifications to the crossings at, I believe it was Croft, not Croft, yeah, Cross and, uh, King Avenue. Something to do with the preemption circuit for those signals. And is, once you touch anything to do with those crossings, they were gonna also require us to do full-blown clo- crossing improvements, new crossing arms, gates, everything, just blew the project scope out of the water. So in talking with the Federal Rails Authority, we've all agreed that, um, the scope no longer matches what the intended grant purpose was. We applied for a secondary grant, um, for the additional money to cover the increased scope. Were unsuccessful. Apparently that program is kind of winding down and, uh, we don't know when available funding will come up again. So at this point, we're just trying to complete the design, we're gonna close the project out, have it on the shelf for some future opportunity.
Yeah, cause I think, God, this goes back to when Nick was here, I think we were talking about, uh, over eighty percent of the cost of this was covered by these grants and the city's input was very little, so it made sense to do, but, uh, it's going nowhere now.
Working with a railroad is always challenging. Um, once, you know, they're, they're far away, they're back in Omaha, Nebraska, and, uh, once you start dealing with certain offices back there, all sorts of issues and things come up.
You would, I would like to think, maybe not, I shouldn't say you, I would like to think that the railroad equipment, the tracks, the crossing arms, all of the things associated with the railroad is the railroad's responsibility. But it's not, it's our responsibility. And, um, they have been very strongly encouraging us to, as Michael described, fix all of those crossings throughout this city, entire city, and we don't have the funds to do that at this time. But we will continue to do everything we can to hunt down other people's money to pay for it.
Well, thank you for that. Um, then, uh, if there are no other questions or comments, then I would move to, uh, have, uh, item consent thirteen point one-one adopted.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve thirteen eleven. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four to zero. Next item would be thirteen, thirteen. That was one that I introduced for the council to approve and bring forward for discussion.
Those have all been.
Thirteen point one?
Thirteen point twelve.
Twelve. Is that yours?
Yes, uh, Union Vice Mayor, council. So this is just an update as requested by council member Harold on the status of the, uh, there was, so just a little history back in June to twenty twenty-four. There was a moratorium on downtown demolitions and an attempt to save the historic cam building. Um, while that was unsuccessful and the building was demolished, uh, council did take action, October first, twenty twenty-four, uh, authorizing the, um, established historic resources ad hoc committee to proceed with a number of items, namely those were to start establishing a local register of historic resources to protect, uh, in the future, uh, some of the city's historic resources. Uh, direct staff to explore and work through the, um, Office of Historic Preservation at the state, uh, to either become a certified local government, as well as look into the Mills Act program. Take a look at the city's existing historic preservation ordinance, so in effect, putting the, that ordinance to work, uh, and having an active historic preservation program. So in the following months, the moratorium did end in December. Uh, staff has received no further demolition permits. However, a number of important steps have occurred with the committee in the, in the months since. Um, and that includes meetings that have been, that have occurred with the Office of Historic Preservation, where they confirmed the ability for the city to move forward in establishing Mills Act contracts with historic properties, um, as long as we coordinate with our, uh, county assessor's office. In addition, uh, we have all the tools necessary to begin the city's historic preservation program with minimal state oversight, uh, the only really state involvement would be if the city chose to apply to become a certified local government. So in the spirit of that, uh, the committee is moving forward with a number of its initial nominations to be designated as a historic resource and, um, just as a refresher for the, for the city council. Those would be reviewed by the committee, uh, they're presented formally in a public hearing to the planning commission and ultimately, uh, uh, final vote will be with the city council. And so we act, there's actually the next scheduled committee meeting is April sixteenth, uh, to review, uh, some of those remaining, uh, nominations. And so I anticipate, as we finish out the spring here, those nominations moving through the process, going first to planning commission and any of those recommendations that coming to the city council, I would say before the end of the summer, or before we start summer. Um, that's my, my update, but, uh, happy to answer any additional questions.
Questions?
Yes, I, I had a question, so in terms of staff's perspective, given that, uh, moratorium has expired, you don't feel a need for, uh, additional moratorium?
That is certainly, uh, council's purview, um, there isn't, you know, until a property is listed on the register or is, or is in the nomination procedure, it is vulnerable to demolition. You know, so some, so I think until we start establishing that, that's really the purpose of the registry. Is to recognize the buildings and then have a process to review, um, not just demolition permits, but alteration permits, things of that sort. Um, and so in that time, uh, the committee has created a pamphlet with information on the different programs. And, um, like I said, we've received a number of initial nominations, uh, we are taking it on a voluntary basis with some already interested property owners and trying to advertise the program. Um, but that is certainly, uh, council's purview, we could always, uh, if that is council's desire.
Yeah, I think, I think for me, I appreciate the process and the involvement of community folks, uh, you know, taking this and moving it forward. and eventually getting to where we think we need to get to. But I think my main concern is that if there's no moratorium at this time, something similar could could happen. I mean, I you know, that one particular property we were talking about got demolished and now it's a big lot, empty lot for sale, right? So um, I'm just a little concerned that something may spring up and we may not be ready. So I'm not sure uh, the city manager, uh, what would be the process if tonight or if we had to come back uh for us to maybe extend a moratorium to July first and then revisit at that time where we are on that process.
Yeah, I would defer to the city attorney's office.
That's something we could uh, as on today's item, you know, request.
Yeah, I don't think the way that today's item is written that you could take that action necessarily tonight, but you could certainly request that that item be brought back at the next meeting for a moratorium.
Right. So um, you know, unless there's any council opposition, you know, as a as a city attorney uh mentioned, then I would request that our next meeting would be April fifteenth, I guess, uh fifteen. Maybe agenda is a a discussion to see if uh council would wanna continue more term, at least through July first. Okay.
On the uh on the on the original agenda request that I submitted for review by council, which they can agree by consensus to put it on the agenda, it stated in there extending the moratorium on demolition of downtown buildings.
Yeah, I get, I understand that, but the agenda title is just a status update. So with that, um, it doesn't give notice to the, like, the public has to be able to come and and comment on these items. And if they don't know that you guys are considering an additional moratorium, they don't get the opportunity to comment on that. So I think that that would be the issue here with extending the moratorium today. That makes sense.
Bring it back at the next meeting, council, and list it on the agenda that way so the public has adequate notice. Make a motion.
Do I need to make a motion or just direction, consensus direction?
We have majority consensus where we have.
So for myself and Maderos and.
Yes, you do.
The next item is thirteen thirteen. I think these are thirteen thirteen, fourteen and fifteen, a little bit confusing, and I think they're out of order. These were agenda requests submitted by myself and Councilmember Maderos, which they were agreed upon to come back to council for discussion, which they never were back for discussion. So now we have them on the consent calendar. Do we choose to discuss it tonight or?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. So so the the reason I have, first of all, I apologize for that. I lost track that we had these items out there and Councilmember Harold mentioned it to me and I checked with Melissa. Melissa's like, yes, we have them right here. And I was like, oh, I think you guys are waiting for me to do something with it. So I apologize. That's why we threw all of them on this agenda. That was the quickest I can get them here. But the agenda had already been finished by the time that I went back to verify. And so I said, I said, Melissa, we gotta get them on. She put them on here. But that's why I want you to pull them, because I want you to talk about all of them. So so it's in your court, I think.
Okay. Since I'm the one submitted, the reason it was submitted, it was because within, I believe, a two and a half week period, we had two collisions at Enyo and O. Both of them resulted in injuries. Some property damage. We've had other collisions there and we've had quite a few constituents that have been concerned about this intersection. This whole issue really developed back in, I believe, probably the eighties or early nineties, when the school asked permission to close down Kern Street to allow buses to park there, which now forced traffic that normally would have gone all the way down Kern Street to Blackstone. Now it goes over to to Enyo and increases traffic at that intersection. And the problem also is it's an offset intersection. And I think the only way to to issue, to do anything with that intersection is to make it an all way stop. And some of my constituents that I talked to pretty much in agreement with that, that that's the only solution for the problem.
And what staff is doing at this point, we did pull traffic data, compare it to another intersection or two and does appear there is some traffic, a collision data. Staff has moved forward with hiring the engineering group to do the warrant study. Uh, once that study comes back, then we produce that information to city council and you guys can make a decision on whether or not we're ready to move forward with that, or we stop or not.
Any other discussion on it?
I I went through this at, when I made the request at Merritt and uh M Street, in fact, I was getting frustrated because it took almost two years to get it done, but um, Michael can clarify, there's, from the standpoint of being legally sufficient to be able to take that step, there are studies that have to be done, the traffic studies that have to be done and a a supportable conclusion that has to be reached before uh we can proceed. Maybe, maybe you can explain that, Michael.
Uh, that's correct, council member. Um, the California manual view from traffic control devices does contain um a process by which you analyze intersections, stop warrants, basically to verify whether certain conditions are met um for the installation of stop signs. Uh, council could choose to, um, depending on how those warrants turn out, you could choose to still take action and and designate the intersection as an always stop. But in doing so, it does come with some liability, some risk for uh for basically doing a stop installation without, you know, studied and designated uh criteria being met.
It's a fancy way of saying that those lawyers will get you if you don't, if you don't do that the right way, isn't that?
That is correct.
Okay. So I guess we just wait. So that's an informational item, basically, is what this is. Okay.
Uh, thirteen point fourteen, I also introduced that one in regards to the possibility of seeing if Caltrans would consider moving one thirty seven from Tulare Street and M Street to Tulare Street, No Street, and then going to Enyo and then proceeding like it does right now. My thought behind that was that some of the events that we have at the amphitheater would require, I guess, signage outside of the amphitheater. So we would have to get an encroachment permit from Caltrans. Uh, the police department, when they have their annual inspection, would have to get an encroachment permit from Caltrans. Um, and it would move it out of the middle of the city. That was my whole thought process behind that.
Based on the information that I think the uh city manager provided to all of us, um, not based on that, but I think the idea is great. I think it makes all the sense in the world. But based on his information, uh, it appears that making what is just a very basic uh routine adjustment with Caltrans has all kinds of unintended consequences that will have ramifications many different other places. And while it's a great idea, it may not be exactly the right time to do that. And perhaps you can explain for the public, because I know you did indicate to us.
Yeah. So so our current pro, what we're intending to do currently, we've had some preliminary discussions of Caltrans. They're open to the idea. They're intending to come here with a future meeting to talk to council, like what would the process be, what's involved in all of that? I don't think there's any any harm at all in having Caltrans come and talk about all those things. I just, I would just want council and the public to be aware that, as Councilmember Maderos is just speaking to, typically, these kinds of moves usually come with other, sometimes unintended consequences. And so I think taking the information in is great. I just don't want to create an expectation that this is necessarily or absolutely going to happen at this point in time because in my experience, um, some of the consequences we may not want to have to deal with. One that I have seen before, and I'm not saying this will come up, but I have seen before where Caltrans is now, you take overall ongoing maintenance responsibility of the roadway. Well, you know, you can't always get what you, just what you want. You might have to give something that somebody else wants to. And so I think we 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 do the investigation, we hear what they have to say, that'll give council more information so it can decide what it wants to do after that. It could be that council takes it all in and and we wait until, as you know, Caltrans has done major roadway improvements on one thirty seven and are continuing to talk about doing additional roadway improvements all the way through the Enyo corridor at the tune of several, well, twenty some odd million dollars, I think. Um, you know, I certainly wanted to, wouldn't want to do anything that would encourage them not to move forward with that project. So there could be a timing issue too in terms of if we were to do something, when we want to do it. So we need to gather more information, I think.
So are we talking about um Tulare Avenue now, one thirty seven goes down M Street to Enyo? So what's the rerouting that we're talking about, staying on Tulare Avenue?
To Oak Street and then Oak Street down to Enyo.
Yeah, I mean, that makes all the sense in the world. The problem is the residual consequences from making that slight change. The, uh, from what uh Marx indicated, they come back and say, okay, we'll do that. But you you take care now of all the maintenance in the city of Tulare on one thirty seven instead of us. And you, you know, uh, whatever, you know, some of these other things that we just don't want to have happen because of a minor change. So that basically it would go on Oak Street in front of the water tower.
Mm-hmm.
And then it would head down Enyo from there.
Mm-hmm.
And eliminate that one area right downtown circling the park or right around.
Well, it would eliminate that area and that intersection at Tulare and M is an offset intersection. It's a small intersection. And you do see trucks going down through there occasionally. And then when they try to turn onto Enyo and say, go westbound, that creates a problem. Uh, if they went down Oak Street, the first intersection, Kern, would be a lighted intersection. And then they probably might turn around and and make Enyo a lighted intersection also. And then we wouldn't have to do an all the way stop there. But, you know, it was just, I've been looking at from the traffic standpoint of that offset intersection. And anybody that drives knows that if you're the number two lane and you're westbound, the thing drops off and you're almost leaning up against a light pole. It's just a bad intersection, I think, for a state highway. Back in the fifties, one thirty seven went all the way through Tulare Street, all the way through. And then about sixty one or something like that, they decided to change it and go down M Street. Daniel. So just to see, maybe they might consider changing it, you know. Uh, next item, thirteen point fifteen, Mr. Maderos.
Yeah, I believe uh the ball's rolling on that. Is that correct, uh, Michael? There's been con contact with uh TCAG and uh Ted Smalley about uh the procedure and the manner in which we could proceed with this and and based on what you indicated, the lead agency would probably be the county.
That's correct, Mr. Maderos. Um, Ted Smalley did advise that he he actually reached out to individuals with the county and I assume it might have been uh Supervisor Vanderpoel or some someone at that level and verified that, yeah, there was some excitement on their part, the thought of collaborating with intersection improvements. Um, based on that feedback, he felt it would be appropriate for the city to provide a letter to Cal or to the county, um, basically stating our intent to work with them collaboratively to see that intersection improvements are done and, you know, put our input in that we think around about would be a good solution at that intersection.
Can we uh, do we need a motion or can we just have consensus that Michael is to draw that letter and send it on behalf of the city? Under other, under the appropriate signature, let's put it that way, either the city manager, the city engineer or the mayor.
I would make a motion for that.
Then I'll make that motion.
I'll say it. Any further discussion? All those in favor of thirteen point fifteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Next item on the agenda is fourteen, public hearing. Comments related to public hearing items are limited to three minutes per speaker for a maximum of thirty minutes per item, unless otherwise extended by council. For those that wish to provide public comment while viewing the meeting online, you may call one five five nine three six six one eight four nine. Please note that there will be approximately a twenty second delay in broadcast for viewers when calling in, muted device used for viewing the meeting. Steven?
Good evening, Vice Mayor Harold, members of the council. Uh, the request, this is a request by San Joaquin Valley Homes to annex into the city limits and subdivide approximately a hundred and forty point three two acres into a five hundred and fifty six lot, single family residential subdivision with approximately five point four seven acres of that being a remainder parcel to be zoned rural residential. Um, the project proponents are again requesting to annex and subdivide approximately a hundred and forty point three two acres. The project site is located immediately adjacent to the existing city limit to the west and currently uh consists of agricultural land. Um, the site is located on the southeast corner of Morrison Street and Prosperity Avenue. Uh, staff has reviewed the annexation and believes that it can be found that the proposed annexation is uh represents an orderly expansion of the city limits. And staff has also reviewed and determined that the project is consistent with chapter ten point nine four or annexations of the city of Tulare's municipal code. If approved, the applicant would be required to provide uh application materials and to pay LAFCO filing fees. And the city would submit an application to the Tulare County Local Agency Formation Commission and LAFCO in order to initiate annexation proceedings. The existing general plan designation for the site is rural, our residential estate and rural residential within the city of Tulare's adopted twenty thirty five general plan. The applicant is proposing to change the existing general plan land use designation for the um the majority of the site to low density residential with a five point four seven acre remainder parcel being uh remaining designated rural residential. Uh, the city's general plan uh sets a standard for low density residential ranges from three point one to seven dwelling units per acre. The applicant is proposing to develop at a density of approximately four point one two eight dwelling units per acre. So the overall development would meet the requirements of the low density residential land use designation if allowed to be amended.
Steven, go back, if you could go back to that last slide.
Sure.
Hey, if that, what's in blue right there is, is that the property owned by the uh school district?
Yes.
It is, okay. So we know that the Tulare City Schools owns property right adjacent to the proposed development, is that correct?
The proposed uh annexation is currently subject to the county's zoning requirements and is zoned AE twenty and AE forty, which is agricultural exclusive twenty and forty acre minimum parcel size. The applicant is proposing to uh prezone the site. The proponents originally requested that the zoning designation be set at the R one five or single family residential five thousand square foot minimum lot area with a rural residential portion for the remainder piece. Uh, the city recently adopted the comprehensive zoning ordinance update and as part of the update, the R one five zone was eliminated. Um, and all parcels that were zoned R one five were changed to be zoned R one four. The applicants submitted the their zone amendment application several months before the completion adoption of the comprehensive update. And so as such, the development is proposed to be built at a five thousand square foot standard. But if approved, the zoning map would show and reflect an R one four zoning or the area upon annexation into the city limits. Uh, the proposed zoning designation would be consistent with the low density residential and re rural residential general plan designations. The applicant is proposing to construct a five hundred and fifty six lot, single family residential subdivision. Um, access to the subdivision would be provided through multiple points of access to being off of Morrison and to off of Prosperity, one of which would include the extension of Oakmore Street to the south uh of Prosperity Avenue. The development proposes to establish a park pond within the development. The current idea would be that the pond portion of the development would be suitable to also be used as park space and would meet slope requirements. Uh, class one bike path would be provided along Morrison Street and in. Class one bike path would be provided along Morrison Street and internally throughout the development. The proposed development would be required to provide connections to city water, sewer and storm drain. And would establish storm drain facilities within the park pond mentioned. Develop improvements related to park space, streets, curb, gutter, sidewalks, block walls, landscaping would be provided by the developer. The project is proposed to be constructed in three phases as shown. And the phases are planned to start from the west side of the development and move eastward. An environmental impact report was prepared for the project in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. The EIR was circulated for public review. During the public review period, staff did receive comments from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. And the Santa Rosa Rancheria Tachioke tribe, as well as a neighboring private property owner. A response to those comments that were received was prepared. And can be found within the final environmental impact report that was provided within your agenda materials. Uh, in addition, the staff, staff did receive a comment letter from the law office of Lozano Smith on behalf of local school districts regarding the project. Uh, a response to the comment letter received was prepared by Four Creeks along with city staff. And the comment letter and response to those has been attached as an exhibit within the agenda materials that were provided to you. Uh, after receipt of the school district's comment letter, the city staff did work to meet with each of the individual school district's representatives. And to discuss, uh, with each district. Their needs and how to facilitate a more open dialogue. And how the city could and school district could work together to plan for future growth. Uh, meetings to this point have been positive and productive. The initial study and final environmental impact report, uh, prepared for the project, found that the implementation. Of mitigation measures identified in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. That despite those mitigation measures, significant unavoidable impacts would remain due to the project. Specifically to agricultural resources. So as a result, staff is recommending that the city council certify the final environmental impact report. With appropriate findings and a statement of overriding considerations. As well as a mitigation monitoring or reporting program for the project. So in conclusion, staff is recommending that the city council approve a resolution. Uh, resolutions approving the requested annexation, the requested general plan amendment, as well as past apparent ordinance, pre-zoning the property. And finally, certifying the environmental impact report. Uh, with the appropriate findings, uh, statement of overriding considerations and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. For the F and C farming annexation and subdivision project. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Open the public hearing on this issue. Any one from the public like to comment? Yes.
Evening. Um, I'm Allison Shaw from Tulare. He didn't speak, I'm not sure who I need to talk to. Um, he didn't talk about it. Um, in his thing, we kind of spoke about it last month when we were here, but we, there was no engineers here either. And maybe this isn't the time, but along with, um, building all this. Is there, and they're going to be building a four lane road paid for, I believe, by San Joaquin Valley Homes. If I'm correct. But I'm wondering if they would consider a four lane road with a turnout being that there's twenty-one homes to the left. Between Morrison and Oakmore, there's twenty-one homes on the north side. And they have eleven driveways. One of those being a county road, Lewis Lane, which goes all the way through thirteen driveways, if you're counting, um, circular driveways. So I'm just asking if that's something that I need to go talk to the city engineers? If that's even a possibility that they could talk to Four Creeks about it, or if that's just out of the question.
Mark?
Uh, it would be great if, Melissa, can you pull back of a map so I can understand exactly where we're referring to? And where, where can you?
They get the very beginning. Yes.
That one.
See that triangle of homes to the north or there's. There's more than twenty-one because.
Melissa, can you give her the point? Does she have the pointer?
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not following the issue, I'm sorry.
Okay, so my, my.
Can you give her the pointer?
So, starting from here, which is Morrison, there's a house that Morrison deadens right into. And that is where they're wanting to put the first roundabout. If, I'm sorry, if I'm correct. But there's all these homes, so all from all the way to right here, and I didn't count any of the ones on Oakmore. But from in between Oakmore and Morrison, there is thirteen driveways, one of them being an actual county road, which is. Lewis Lane, which is right here, um, and twenty-one houses in there. With it being a four lane road, which is what they're proposing to be from Morrison to Oakmore, is there any way that there could be a turnout lane? So we, all those homes, families can safely turn into their driveway off of a four lane road.
So like a broadened shoulder to the road essentially, is that what you're asking for?
Like a median, like a center, like.
A left-hand turn lane, center lane to get in.
Yes.
Oh, center, okay, in the middle of the road.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just the road or? When you say there's how many homes on?
There's, uh, well, there's thirteen driveways or pool ends. There's some, some homes have multiple because there's orchards and stuff. But thirteen driveways, I just feel like it'd be the safer route. It's a really busy road. Especially during morning and afternoon during sundial school hours to be able to safely pull in and out of these homes.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, if I read body language correctly, I think Michael's dying to say something.
Thank you, council member. Yes, ultimately Prosperity Avenue is a major arterial roadway and there would be a raised median. So eastbound traffic would not be able to turn across into those driveways. It would have to go down, say, to Oakmore and flip a U-turn and come back.
It's very inconvenient. So there's no, like, we would just, that would just be it, no more, you can't just turn anymore.
Correct. There might be a turn pocket at Lewis Lane, um, but not for each individual driveway, no.
So, uh, since you're here, how safely, well, you're just saying we can't turn. Anyone going east would not be able to turn left, you'd have to come around.
You would go down to the intersection where you could, you could make a U-turn if there is a turn pocket at Lewis Lane. Or, you know, obviously the safest choice would go to the controlled intersection at Oakmore because that's scheduled to either be a roundabout or a traffic signal. Where you would at least have some stop control and make your turn, U-turn there.
Even worse. Okay, all right. Um, that is all I have then. Thank you.
Michael, along that line, we'd encourage you to stay in touch, be involved, participate so that, uh, your voices are.
But either way, like, that is the, is that kind of the set in stone?
That is the, the city standard for a major arterial roadway would be to have that raised median.
So there, sorry, raised median would be like, there wouldn't, even if I wanted to, I could not. I would hit a curb, I would do a, yes, okay. I guess one more thing, we had spoke about it before, mailboxes, would they get moved to our side of the street?
Good question. Uh, they're currently not on your side of the street?
No.
Yeah. Ultimately, that's, yeah, that, that's the postmaster's decision, but I would assume that they would be moved on to your side of the street, yes.
Michael, is this different than Prosperity where we have the raised divided median? But we have the turnouts into like Lowe's, Home Depot, uh, Raising Cain, all those?
Very similar, um, but you'll notice we don't have them at every single driveway approach, just at certain select ones. That has to do a lot with the spacing, you have to have required D cell and storage in those turn lanes.
On the post office, I mean, the, uh, mailboxes, their situation would be similar to what happened on Mooney heading north. Just before Tulare Avenue. When the, the post office wouldn't stop anymore because of the configuration and the danger to their drivers to use those boxes. And what they ended up doing was using a community box located in a safe area. So I, I would imagine it'd be something similar to this that would.
It could be a slightly different situation, um, because they do have a shoulder to pull onto. Uh, in the case of where you're speaking on Mooney Boulevard, um, the widening of the road took that shoulder away. So there was no way for the mail carrier to pull over and not be in the flow of traffic.
Lewis Lane is the, the one that goes up and curves over to Oakmore?
Correct.
That's Lewis Lane?
Yes.
I can't recall, are there? Any roads that come off Lewis Lane to the other, to the other, to the houses that you could access from there? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Do we have anyone on the phone?
No, we do not.
Nothing? Did I have a close public comment? Turn it over to council. Sagala?
Yes, if, uh, we can, Jason, if we could, um. Uh, going back to the park, I think for me, uh, I'm, you know, I've always been trying to create what I consider real parks. I mean, a hole in the ground, basin, capture water, doubles up in a, as a park in a lot of our developments. Um, is there any, um. I guess, so my understanding, so that little triangle there, uh. It's a basin that's going to double up as a park, is that correct?
So the current plan that the developers provided would be that the portion to the, on the right side of there, that's kind of dotted, would be an at-grade portion of the park. And the area that's kind of triangular that's showing the, the step down would be, it would be both basin and park. And so it'd meet a slope requirement necessarily, necessary to still be usable as park space. And not just be a deep dark pit. That's the, that would be the current, the way it was explained to staff on how it would be provided.
So with the dotted line, uh, sort of gray flat part and the addition of the basin would, would be enough to requirement for parkage.
It would be.
Parkland for this area.
Yes, it would meet, uh, it would be, it would meet their three acres per thousand that the Quimby Act falls for.
Right. And in, in terms of the park itself, is there any plans to put like, you know, equipment on it or is it just going to be grass?
We will, that would continue to be discussed with city staff as the subdivision is designed and as improvement plans are drawn up. I think the, the, the intent of the city would be to provide some play equipment, um, but maybe Michael can chime in on how that it's currently working.
I mean, is that, I guess the question before putting Mike on the spot, is, is that, is that part of this request? I mean, is this where this could be made and say, hey, we want to make sure that there's playground equipment or something there? It's not just.
So typically.
The grass.
Typically, the way the process works is when there's a park requirement, it has to meet, um, it's reviewed by our park staff. And so they have standards they provide for the type of equipment and all of that. And so that's, that's done during the plan check process when the park's being designed.
So, all right, so, so it wouldn't happen in this particular part of the process, but there is. Uh, an intent by staff to work with the developer in putting together a park that would, people would be happy to go to that has amenities other than just open space.
Yes, at this stage, um, since it's a tentative map, we're making sure that the space is reserved for the park space. And we have the size, the acreage, um, features such as the ponding basin, that they meet the slope requirements as Stephen mentioned. And once that's been incorporated and recorded on the map. Once they're submitting plans for construction of the homes as well as construction of the park and some of the landscaping out lots. Our Parks Division will review the park design to make sure it meets the park standards.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sarah?
I have no questions.
Councilman Maderas? Any discussion? I have no questions.
Then I'll make a motion to adopt, uh, the resolution requesting, uh, the Tulare County Local Agency Formation Commission to take proceedings for annexation. As recommended, uh, by staff and the other findings as indicated therein.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carries four zero.
Thank you, Stephen. See how much easier this was than the planning commission?
Yeah, hopefully if it's working right, uh, the planning commission's vetted out some of these issues.
Just want to make sure that the motion made was necessary sufficient for all of the actions.
Now it's, uh, Stephen, you're still up at fourteen point two.
He has a question.
No, he asked a question.
There's three different motions, I believe, right?
Yeah, but I incorporated all of them as recommended by the.
Yeah, as long as all of them are incorporated in one motion, that is fine.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
I was trying to save time.
Next item will be public hearing on fourteen point two, community development planning.
Oh, that is, uh, still me as well. Uh, so this item is regarding the twenty twenty-four housing element and general plan annual reports. Uh, so tonight's staff is requesting that your council receive and accept the twenty twenty-four housing element and general plan annual progress reports. And authorize staff to submit them to the Office of Planning Research, the Department of Housing and Community Development, following opportunity for a public comment. Uh, government code requires that the APRs be considered at a public meeting before your council and that public comment be allowed. The APRs were previously presented to the planning commission at their March twenty-fourth meeting. No comments were received at that time. Uh, following this meeting, staff would submit the APRs to both OPR and HCD as required. The, uh, the housing element APR consists of several spreadsheets, uh, with lots of rows and columns. And it's probably fairly difficult to read. Uh, however, the, as in a, as a summary, they show that in twenty twenty-four, the city approved entitlement applications that would allow for future construction. Of four hundred and sixty-six single family residential units. The city also approved building permits for the construction of four hundred and eight residential units, of which three hundred and eighty-two were single family detached units. Two were multifamily, uh, units consisting of two to four units per building and twenty-four were accessory dwelling units. Uh, the city also issued certificates of occupancy for five hundred and eight residential units. Of which three hundred and eighty were single family detached units. Fifty-six were multifamily units consisting of two to four units per building. Fifty-seven were multifamily units consisting of five or more units per building. And fifteen were accessory dwelling units. When equating the units constructed to the city's regional housing needs allocation arena requirements, the city can count two units towards its moderate income. Need and four hundred and six units towards its above moderate income need. Uh, twenty twenty-four was the first full year of the reporting period for the six cycle housing element. And the renal occasion for the sixth cycle. Uh, the planning period for the sixth cycle runs through twenty thirty-one and the city has a remaining Rena, uh, allocation need. Of one thousand four hundred and thirty-five very low income units. A need of eight hundred and eighty-four low income Rena units. A need of six hundred and thirty-nine moderate income units and one thousand one hundred and. A need of six hundred and thirty nine moderate income units and one thousand one hundred and forty five above moderate income units for the remaining of the planning period in order to meet the goals of Rena. Um, there are several other tables that are provided for the within the, the tables provided, uh, most of which there's nothing for the city to report. The city had no activity related to those tables. However, table D does provide a status update of the city's progress on implementation activities for the six cycle housing element. Uh, within the table, uh, this activity was a little bit odd because, um, the city has yet to adopt a six cycle housing element. However, we are already starting to report on implementation programs that are far enough along to be, um, in draft form. And so we're reporting on those. Um, the six cycle is currently in review, in a second review, it's HCD, and we hope to bring it to city council uh, in the summer for adoption. Um, and lastly, there is a table reporting on the city's leap grant, which was used for the comprehensive zoning ordinance update that was adopted by your council in December. Uh, the other attachments that were provided were for the general plan annual progress report, and they provide activities related to the implementation of the rest of the city's general plan, uh, including the most recent update for each implementation program. Uh, updates that are provided here are in bold are activities that occurred in twenty twenty four. Um, in twenty twenty four, the city adopted one general plan amendment, which was for the Lago subdivision. It is on the southwest corner of Cart Mill and Mooney, and it is a subdivision that is currently under construction. Uh, the report provides information on significant projects that broke ground that your council is aware of, Zemal Park, uh, Bane Dog, uh, Canon Bane Dog Park. Um, Altera Centers for Health had their grand opening in twenty twenty four and some other businesses. Um, the city continued to see, uh, significant, um, development, especially on the single family residential side. Um, and we did see the opening of the second phase of the Santa Fe Trails or the Santa Fe Commons, uh, multifamily project built by self-help enterprises. Um, and lastly, the, uh, general plan APR updates uh, provides updates on long range planning activities um, that saw progress in twenty twenty four. These planning activities included the adoption of the comprehensive update, zoning ordinance update. Uh, the continued progress on the six cycle housing element. And, uh, the city began the preparation of an active transportation plan. Um, information for that plan will be coming to your council in future months as well. Um, the housing element APR and general plan APRs are not considered to be a project under CEQA and do not require any kind of CEQA review. And finally, staff is requesting that your council uh, accept public comment and authorize staff to submit the APR and the APRs to the Office of Planning Research and HCD. Um, be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. At that, I will open the, uh, public comment for housing element and general plan annual progressive reports. Any comments from any of you in the public? Do we have anyone on the phone?
No, we do not.
Hearing done, I will close public comment. Councilmember Sagala?
Uh, I guess two, two questions. The, uh, first one is, uh, in, in the housing element, so projects like the ones you mentioned, the dog park and Zuma Park are considered housing?
Uh, we're, we're mixing two things here. I'm sorry if that's con- uh, I, if I made that confusing. Uh, there's a general plan progress report and then there's an annual progress report. And so the general plan progress report goes through major construction projects that are occurring. So it's kind of conflated to, together with both updates.
Okay. And I think for me, I leave the, the most pressing question, and you know, I think I've brought this up in, in the past and kind of figuring out what can we do to incentivize, what can we do to try to bring up those arena numbers? I know that in what you presented is looking towards twenty thirty one and we have X amount of, or fifteen hundred or so, uh, low, very low, uh, housing goals to try to incentivize and have people build. But if we were to look at the past six years, I think we didn't accomplish many of those. So what I'm afraid is we're gonna go on a ten, twelve year cycle and those Rena, those numbers don't change. I mean, is it, what, what can we do? What can we incentivize? You know, what ideas the staff have or to try to encourage developers that I see out there in the community to say, hey, we need more of this housing. Because I think the, the problem is, um, at least what I see is that when we talk about very, very low income housing, people think ghettos, people think, you know, trashy places, people think, hey, you know, this and that. So it's how can we get over that? And how can, you know, how can we try to accommodate some of those numbers? I mean, so.
Yeah, that, those are, those are great questions and great points. I just want to provide a few comments for the public and for council's consideration. First is keep in mind that, you know, we're not alone. Just about every community, not all, but just about every community in the state is facing similar challenges in trying to develop affordable housing for a variety of reasons. One of the big reasons is because the state doesn't really provide any incentive. We used to be able to use RDA dollars and other sources to be able to incentivize affordable housing. Those dollars are no longer available to us. You know, there's the tax credit program, which we have a number of builders that take advantage of those. Those are all competitive processes. We've had some success with those programs. For example, the Santa Fe Common Self-Health Project. And we're very fortunate. We have self-help and a few other builders in the community that have to focus and specialize in affordable housing. We have done some things in terms of the incentive side of the equation. For example, we are working forward on moving forward with developing the ADU program. That's the accessory dwelling unit program be, uh, associated with the single family homes. We've done some things in terms of incentive programs, like, for example, the next item, the farmland mitigation. There's an incentive there that if someone's building bona fide affordable housing, they don't have to comply with the farmland mitigation. We will bring forward to you in the future some additional programs that are incentive based. The other thing that I think is really important is we're, we have, we're working a few projects, a key projects that are large scale. Well, I don't want to say not large scale, like, let's just say a, a thousand unit subdivision, but large scale in terms of some mixed use projects, couple downtown redevelopment projects we're gonna bring forward to you in the future that has some afford, some potentially affordable housing components to it. We'll bring that to you in the next couple of months. That's a means to be able to not only get people living downtown, but also work towards our arena numbers. If we were to be successful in moving larger scale projects for, let's say, for like the entertainment district, it's very possible that we'll have a developer that'll come in and say, listen, we want to bring in some of those, those retail destination retail uses you're looking for, but we want to supplement that with some mixed use uses as well as multifamily uses. And we may be able to build some affordability possibly into that project because you spread the financials over a large scale project like that. It's a little bit easier to absorb some of the sort of the lost leader components, which is the affordable housing. So it's a tricky project to solve. I'm pretty confident over the next few years, we're gonna get a few more proj- few more projects to move forward. Uh, cause it's important to us as well. I think we also need to get more multifamily in this community. And so once we adopt our housing element, we're gonna be focusing on how do we implement the housing element, just like we're talking about, how do we implement all the other master plans that we've developed in the city? So there's a lot more coming in the near future.
And to Mark's point, the, as we implement the housing element, there are several new implementation programs that the state is requiring that requires us to contact affordable housing developers, to build relationships with them, to work with them on, on grant applications, to keep an inventory of the housing, uh, affordable housing in the city, to make sure that we protect that housing that's existing. And there's a, there's, the new housing element is much more robust in the number of implementation programs than the previous cycle had. And, uh, and I think it's the states, I, uh, that is more the state's ideas of how they see uh, the city being able to try to encourage, uh, affordable housing. And so we'll also be working on implementing that as well.
Right. So I, I think just one of the, one of the ideas that, you know, staff could take back and consider is, uh, and, and if I need to do a, a council request, I mean, I'd like for us to maybe do a study session. You know, after summer and the fall, where you can really talk about Rena and maybe invite, you know, developers, affordable housing developers and others to see what, what kind of incentives they've seen or would like for us to figure out what to do. Because I think for me, just, just trying to make sure that the public understands that when we're talking about very, very low income moderate housing, uh, whether it's fat multifamily, which pretty much always is, that it doesn't mean dilapidated housing, doesn't mean rundown housing. It could be a good, great project like Santa Fe Commons that's put together with multiple grant sources or funding sources. It looks great, but it, it's there to provide housing for certain part of the community. And I think that, that's something that, you know, maybe I need to do better education in my district or other places to let people know that, don't be afraid to have this kind of housing next to you. So maybe, you know, whatever, I'll take guidance from the city manager if he wants me to fill out a form or if they feel that maybe they can do something in the fall, where we have a special study session on that, I, that I'd like to, to recommend that.
Sure, we, 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 we're working on a couple of projects right now. I'm sorry, we are working on a couple of projects right now. So if it'd be okay with council, I think the way I like to proceed is let us get those projects a little bit further. And then we'll kind of bring those projects in combination with an overall discussion, maybe bring some affordable housing builders to broaden, not just, not just those projects, but broaden it to a larger discussion. So I think in the next six months, we can bring that. Councilmember Sarah?
I don't have any questions.
Councilmember Maderos?
Thank you. There are no other questions or comments, and I think I would, uh, find the recommendation here.
Sorry, yeah. It's just, uh, asking to accept and authorize staff to, to file.
Okay, well, all right, well then, uh, I'll take that to accept and authorize staff to file the, uh, uh, the, uh, reports with the Governor's Office of Planning Research and Department of Housing and Community Development. Don't make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Have you a motion to second? Any further discussion? All those in favor of fourteen point two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Carrying four zero. Thank you, Stephen. Next item, public hearing, fourteen point three on farmland mitigation ordinance revisions. Mario?
Yes, uh, thank you, Vice Mayor, council members. So this item's, uh, been on the agenda here a few times. Uh, just a quick recap. Um, the farmland mitigation ordinance was adopted as required in the city's general plan back in twenty twenty. Uh, and since that time, some applicants have had difficulty, uh, finding some ag land to place the conservation easement on, or they had difficulty maybe with the length of time it takes, uh, to find, uh, such easements. A perfect example would be like the project that was presented this evening, FNC Farming. You'll notice the one significant impact was to farmland. And so that project would also have to comply with the ordinance. Um, so to address those issues, there were a number of revisions made to the ordinance to try to provide more clarity, more flexibility for applicants, but also still complying with the legal requirements that the city is bound to, uh, by state law, uh, and the city's general plan requirements. So these revisions have been made. Uh, there's been extensive work done by staff, uh, council members, and particularly, um, I want to turn this over to Councilmember Maderos who, um, really was helpful in, in sitting down and looking through some of the nuances of the ordinance. And so the proposed re- revisions and the ordinance in the staff report this evening reflect some of those discussions. Uh, some of those, uh, some of that work that's gone into revising the ordinance to get it to the, the point it is this evening. Uh, but with that, um, just wanna allow time for Councilman Maderos to share some of his, uh, highlights and some of the concerns he had with the ordinance and how we've improved it. I think from, we can all generally agree to that. Uh, and still move forward with implementation. Um, you'll notice my recommendation is adoption of the zone amendment, but this is a public hearing item after, uh, you know, some words from maybe Councilman Maderos in the public hearing. Thank you.
Uh, to follow up, uh, this first came before us at the first meeting in February. There were aspects of it that, uh, after discussion, became apparent to me and I think others, and I expressed that, that we needed to kind of go back in the, to the, uh, beginning and modify this because in essence, the overall overall, what we were trying to achieve was make land owned by the city, especially near the, uh, treatment plant uh, available for purposes of putting in agricultural conservation easement. And if we were going to do that, if the city was going, going to engage in selling a property interest, we had to have a procedure for determining what the market value was, the easement value was. And we had to have a definition within the ordinance itself. And, uh, I worked with Mario and I in that regard and ultimately submitted it to, uh, our city attorney's office for review. But basically, the easement value as defined in this ord- ordinance is the market value of the land that we're involved with without an easement on it. Less the market value of that same property with the easement on it. And the value of the easement is the difference. Because that's in essence what, uh, someone should be willing to pay under the circumstances as far as the value of the property is concerned. Uh, also, there's an endowment aspect. In other words, on an ongoing basis, um, there, there has to be a monitoring and there's a process as it relates to the trust company that would, uh, that would report to the city on an ongoing basis, and that's incorporated into the ordinance together with the costs that the city has in placing this easement in effect. So the city, uh, so the overall modification to the ordinance was to allow the city to use its property for purposes of agricultural conservation, uh, easements. And, uh, we, we had a better definition of where this property could be. The southern, preferably within ten miles of the city of Tulare, but anywhere within the southern San Joaquin Valley that's identified as, uh, Fresno, Kern, Kings, Madera and Tulare Counties. The, if, you know, the city of Tulare or anyone else would, uh, have property in that area and put an agricultural conservation easement and comply. We ended, uh, if, if it was, if we had a developer who wanted to put, uh, an easement on a larger piece of property, he could, and then he needed, he could obtain credits that could be used in the future as it relates to ag easements. That modification was done. So overall, a- as if you've had the opportunity to read this, it gave the flexibility for the city to engage, uh, engage itself in this process and specifically be in a position to where we could, we as a city could appraise the property along the lines of what's indicated, use that appraisal for a period of time. Between Mario and myself, we also put a provision in there that the city could vary from that for economic development purposes. And, um, indicated that if there's anything that, uh, the community development director in implementing this, uh, anyone objects to, they can appeal to the city council. So if the city council itself has an ability to participate in that, uh, from the ec- from the economic, uh, incentives, that would be with permission of, uh, the city council. So, uh, the city's council continues to have an involvement in it, but we've got to set standard that, uh, staff can follow under the circumstances. So those were the improvements that, that were made. And as I developed this, these changes, I did some conjunction with Mario and I. And a lot of what's we did here is kind of in my bailiwick, so as to speak, in, in the past history I've had in my practice. So I was familiar with it. And, uh, so I'm available for any questions after the public hearing. So we've had public hearing each time, but we have to have public hearing now. So let's continue to stay.
Thank you, Councilman Maderos. At that, I will open the public hearing on this item. Anyone in chambers wishes to, uh, address the issue? Do we have anyone on the phone?
No, we do not.
Good evening, council members. My name is Melody Haig. I'm an entitlements manager for Lennar Homes. And I'm here, um, for this item. Um, we're hoping to get council's, um, support in this ordinance as we're, um, looking to looking forward for the in-lu fee to be able to move forward with our project. Um, again, we're hoping to get council's approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Darlene Mata. I reside in the city of Mycelia. I just want to thank you for having this before you. I know it's been a long time coming. Um, staff's been working on this probably a lot longer than you even know. Um, so we'd appreciate your support. I know a lot of folks that are out there in the building community have been waiting. Um, given some of the issues that they've had, so I'd appreciate your consideration and approval of this item. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, I'll close. Public comment? Councilmember Segala? Is anyone called?
There's no, there's no calls.
Councilman Maderos.
I think I've said enough.
Well, you're, you're the expert.
Yeah, really. No, I, I think, uh, I want to thank Mario. Mario did a lot of work on this and. I want to compliment him in that regard, and, uh. When we finally sent it over to Mark to take a look and send it, I, I think Mark had a few tweaks to it that we got taken care of, I think. The most gratifying aspect was sending it over to the city attorney's office and having them say, uh, it looks fine with us and that. That was kind of ratification, gratifying to me that we headed in the right direction.
I think we were very fortunate to have you on council, that you had expertise in this and helped move this project along. Certainly Mario and everybody else have done a great job, but I think you made it a whole lot easier for them. Did you do this for your ten dollars a month, or?
Yeah, five dollars per meeting. Yeah. Well, if there's no, another, I'll take the liberty to, uh, make a motion to adopt amendment. Number seven fifty-seven approving the revisions as presented to the city of Tulare's farm land mitigation ordinance.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second to approve. Fourteen point three farmland mitigation ordinance revisions. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes four zero. Mr. Mayor, or Vice Mayor, just one second, uh, just as next step, so council and the public's aware, we already have the appraiser under contract. They should have the appraisal done in the next three to four weeks. We're gonna get ready to issue an RFP to the, uh. Yep, the land trusts that would be involved, the third party land trusts, so we can get proposals from them. Then we'll start calculating whatever the city's administrative fee or costs would be in administering the program. We'll lump all those together, come back to council in the near future and, and hopefully establish what the actual value is itself. And we'll walk you through that analysis at that time. So hopefully here, you know. I don't know if it'll be the second meeting in May, but we're hoping we'll be able to get that very soon. Next item on the agenda will be general business. Fifteen point one Fulton Estates and Caltrans improvements. I believe there's something I'm supposed to read in regards to that. Comments related to general business items are limited to three minutes per speaker for a maximum of thirty minutes per item, unless otherwise extended by council. For those that wish to provide public comment while viewing the meeting online, you may call one five five nine three six six one eight four nine. Please note that there will be approximately a twenty second delay in broadcast for viewers when calling in, mute the device used for viewing the meeting. Is this yours, Mario, or?
Michael's life engineer.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. On October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, the Planning Commission approved the tentative subdivision map of the Fulton Estates. As part of the entitlement process, a traffic impact study was prepared to analyze certain intersections and roadway segments anticipated to be. Uh, directly impacted by the development. The traffic impact study, uh, included the intersection of State Route one thirty-seven and Oakmore Street. The traffic impact study identified that under existing conditions, the intersection failed to meet minimum levels of service requirements and met warrants for installation of a traffic signal. With the additional traffic resulting from full buildout of the project, intersection operation was projected to further deteriorate. To mitigate the project impacts, the traffic impact study recommended that the project pay its fair share of the cost to install a traffic signal at the intersection. Through the payment of development impact fees. However, the intersection improvements are not a fee generating component of the city's current development impact fee program. Based on concerns regarding operations and safety at the intersection which Caltrans shares. The payment of a fair share cost was deemed inadequate. Intersection improvements were determined to be necessary in conjunction with any project phase that constructed a roadway connection to Oakmore Street. Which would directly impact the intersection. Accordingly, the engineering department's conditions of approval for the Fulton Estates subdivision require that the developer. Undertake an intersection control evaluation study. Subject to the review and approval of Caltrans to determine what intersection improvements should be constructed. The ICE process, the intersection control evaluation, is a, is a. Procedure that was developed by Caltrans as their standard means of identifying and evaluating potential alternatives for improving state highway intersections. The process has since been replaced by the intersection safety and operational assessment process, also, also known as ISO AP. Phase two of the Fulton Estates subdivision would create that roadway connection to Oakmore Street and trigger the city's requirements for intersection improvements. The developers voiced concerns about the time required to complete an ISO AP. And how that will impact their ability to move forward with this phase of the subdivision. I reached out to the branch chief at Caltrans responsible for the ISO AP process and was told that their standard review process for what an ISO AP. Takes two to three weeks, but he did add the caveat. That the timing to complete the process is largely dependent upon the qualifications and responsiveness of the developer's transportation consultant. Based on concerns regarding their ability to move forward with phase two of the Fulton Estates subdivision in a timely manner. The developer has submitted a request that the city consider the following. Fulton Estates offers the following improvements to be completed as part of its phase two project. These improvements would be in lieu of the ICE study or ISO, ISO AP. Construct curb and gutter and sidewalk along the subdivision's full State Route one thirty-seven frontage to Oakmore Street. Restrike eastbound State Route one thirty-seven to provide for a right turn lane at Oakmore Street. Construct curb gutter and sidewalk along the subdivision's full Oakmore Street frontage. Restripe Oakmore Street to provide for a southbound through lane, a northbound left turn lane, and a northbound right turn lane at State Route one thirty-seven. And temporarily limit Fulton Estates traffic to right turns in and right turns out on the Oakmore Street. This limitation would be removed once the existing intersection of State Route one thirty-seven and Oakmore Street is improved. Developer also suggested contribution of twenty-five thousand dollars to the preparation of a ISO AP. Based on inquiries I've made with some of our local transportation engineering firms, the estimated cost for hiring a consultant to complete an ISO AP. Would fall somewhere between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars, so that figure is accurate. There's another factor that plays into the discussion of improvements to the intersection of State Route one thirty-seven and Oakmore Street. If you recall, back in January twenty-first, I made a presentation to council regarding planned transportation improvements in southeast Tulare. Included in that presentation was a brief discussion regarding the alignment of Oakmore Street. Currently, Oakmore Street is designated as a major arterial roadway in the city's general plan circulation element. South of State Route one thirty-seven, there are no substantial constraints preventing Oakmore Street from being built out to that standard. However, existing development north of State Route one thirty-seven significantly constraints the ability to extend Oakmore Street northward as a major arterial roadway. Staff identified an alternative to realign the Oakmore Street major arterial corridor eastward to intersect State Route one thirty-seven. At the road one twenty-six alignment. And Melissa, maybe while I'm going through this, could you pull up that exhibit? In this scenario, the existing intersection of State Route one thirty-seven and Oakmore Street would likely be a minor. Intersection with turning movements controlled by a raised median. A few weeks back, the developer's transportation consultant and city staff had a meeting with Caltrans regarding what would be required for the Fulton Estates ISO AP. In those discussions, Caltrans agreed in principle that the relocation of the Oakmore corridor to road one twenty-six was an option that they would consider. They further agreed that knowing that such a realignment was planned could impact the scale of the improvements they would analyze in the ISO AP. It's possible that the improvement suggested by the developer would be sufficient for the existing intersection of State Route one thirty-seven and Oakmore Street as an interim solution. But Caltrans was clear that an ISO AP would still be required to determine what the permissible improvements would be. So in your staff report, um, I did identify some potential, what I felt were potential risks and impacts that council should consider. When considering the developer's, um, proposal, I won't go into those. Um, but if you have any questions regarding them, I'm happy to answer them. An alternative solution, uh, the council could consider would be to provide a letter to Caltrans. Basically in support of what the developer is requesting in the way of improvements. And to ask Caltrans to forego the completion of an ISO AP to allow for those improvements to be installed. Um, that would be my recommendation if we were going, if council were going to take action in this regard. Um, as it would allow decision-making authority to remain with Caltrans. And a draft of such a letter was attached for council's consideration tonight. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Before a public comment, Mr. Vice Mayor, can I just get clarification on one issue? When you, when you say it, the ISO, I'll call it ISO, it's easier to say, is, it takes two to three weeks? Is, is that itself take two to, I mean, what takes two to three weeks? Cause that, that doesn't sound like a very long time.
That's the Caltrans review time. So obviously there would be some preparation time by the transportation consultant and putting together. The study, but Caltrans is, kind of has that as their stated goal for turnaround time and reviewing, uh, the document.
So how, how long's it take a developer to put that together for a presentation to Caltrans? What, when's it, for the two to three weeks to begin picking, so as to speak?
I don't really have enough experience with these documents to, to say, I will say that one was just recently. Prepared, um, for the KCOK subdivision, and I, it went very quickly, I was surprised. Um, I want to say they spent maybe four weeks in preparing it, and Caltrans did. Complete their review in under three weeks.
Any comments from the public?
Vice Mayor, council members, staff. First of all, I'd like to thank staff for bringing this item to the council, for you guys to, um.
Excuse me, excuse me. You're supposed to identify yourself when you come before us. You know that, don't you? You've been around here for a long time. I think you're, I think you're aware of that.
Greg Nunley, right? The record, if you put it on the record, please.
What's that?
Put it, put your name on the record.
Okay, Greg Nunley, twenty-five ninety, Diamante Court. Um, I'd like to start off with going back when we had this project approved. Um, Oakmore was going to go straight through and, and, and we started our ICE study. We've been working on that for probably over a year. Um, and by the way. My traffic consultant, Charlie Klaus, is on, uh, watching the meeting, he's on standby if you guys want to ask him questions, if Michael wants to ask him questions. So we, we started our ICE study, uh, which is now an ISOP study. They don't do an ICE study now, I don't think. So in that process, since we've signed up to do our project and the ICE study for the intersection of Oakmore and Tulare Avenue. The goalposts have kind of changed in the sense that now. The arterial has shifted a quarter of a mile or longer to the east. Um, and it's changed the scope of what would be studied. And we agree with staff, I, I completely agree to avoid imminent domaining or going through a hassle and taking out twelve to fifteen houses. Um, and rerouting the arterial to avoid that, uh, and it's probably beneficial to the city. I want to share, um, Bonadelli, who's here present, he's gonna speak after me. He likes the Tulare project. He wants to stay in Tulare. He wants to finish his project, meaning the second phase. So I want to make a suggestion that I, I didn't get a chance to talk to Michael about this. I think I talked to a couple of the council members last couple of days about this. But, you know, John wants to start his second phase eighty-six houses. And what I like to propose is, cause I've heard that the city might get stuck holding the bag or. Um, on the improvements on the intersection. But if you guys would let John Bonadelli finish his improvements on his frontage of Tulare Avenue and Oakmore. You guys would get those improvements. That right away is not gonna change, no matter what happens, because the ultimate right away is already established. And that dedication has already been given to the city or is ready to be given to the city. I think Michael can verify that. And what I would propose is to release Bonadelli Homes to finish their eighty-six lots. It would benefit the city and getting the full improvements on their frontage, which isn't gonna change no matter what the ICE studies does or the ISOP study says. And in consideration that for the city, I would, uh, take the full burden on my commercial corner that I own. I would still continue to do an ISOP study or an ICE study or whatever Caltrans wants. And you guys could leverage my commercial corner to where I have to do the study. And I have to pay for whatever the open day improvements are, my fair share. Um, I think that's a win-win for the city, and I think it's a win-win for Bonadelli Homes. Because they get to do their project, the city gets improvements on their frontage. And, you know, if, if, if we don't come to a conclusion and some kind of remedy to where we could move this project forward and, and Bonadelli Homes. Gets past their first phase and they can't start more houses and, um. Move their reconstruction crew out of Tulare, it's really hard to get them back to continue a project. They're gonna jump ship to another project or. Hopefully they would come back to Tulare. He wants to be in Tulare, and he's gonna probably tell you that when he stands up here. But if you guys would consider that, I think that's a compromise that I'm willing to take the full burden under that corner. You guys could put whatever conditions you want on that, condition me to do, like I said, any studies you guys want, that Caltrans wants. And that would be the full intersection improvements. I would only pay my, pay my fair share at the end of the day. Maybe I have to put the improvements in and get reimbursed through anything above and beyond my fair share. But the city would get what they need and not have to have the city work with. Um, Caltrans directly or take the lead on this. I would still be the lead, and I would continue to do the ISOP study or the ICE study. Right now, that, that will not get held up. So thanks for your consideration and, uh. John Bonadelli, next, guys. Thanks.
Greg, before you, Greg? Be, be, uh. What would be the normal conditions, Michael? And I, I asked you to state because I wanted, if, if you can add to that, what would be the. Normal conditions because we, we've got a commercial corner there. That is, would normally be a situation to where it would deal with, uh, the traffic control in that city, that situation. I mean, what, what would that piece of property be taking, um, over for the residential? And, and would, would we be dealing with bonding and that kind of stuff?
Yes, uh, when, when a project would move forward on that commercial property. Um, we could require improvements and bonding associated with seeing that those improvements are, are put in. Um, perhaps one issue that council should consider is. We have, we have a traffic impact study that identifies that there's an existing deficiency at that intersection. And there is some liability and risk to the city if you were to take action that allows new trips. In other words, you know, the connection of phase two to Oakmore Street generating new trips at that deficient intersection without any mitigation. Um, city attorney or even Shauna in HR with risk management. Um, experience probably can speak to that better than I, but that was one, one concern I had.
So the way we are right now, the city is. So the way we are right now, the city isn't involved in that. That's, that's between the developers and Caltrans. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's the way the conditions read.
And the change from the proposal that we're dealing with is the city now is involved in seeing to this project is completed.
Well, no, actually what Mr. Nunley has proposed is that the requirement to address. Those intersection improvements be shifted onto the commercial property as opposed to the residential. So it would still, the developer would still play a role in it.
But that doesn't change responsibility for the city itself. I mean, we're, we're still in the same position under his proposal.
Correct.
Instead of the Bonad- Bonadelli developer being responsible. Nunley or Greg Nunley or one of his entities would be responsible. The owner of that, as opposed to Mr. Nunley, the owner of that commercial development. Property would be responsible.
You guys, you guys, council member Maderas, you guys would just hold that commercial corner hostage. Until I get the ice study done and the determination of what the quote unquote opening day improvements are. And then if I want to develop that commercial corner, then I would have to do those opening day improvements and work it out with. You know, Michael and the city of what the fair share cost is and. You know, and probably ultimately what I see is, because I think that project, the east of us is moving along pretty swiftly, it looks like. Probably by the time I get my ISO study done, um, they're going to probably be. Starting that or pretty close to that would be my guess to get their entitlements and get their project off the ground. I would probably work in tandem with that if not join them because my engineer is their engineer. Charlie Klaus, who's my traffic consultant online, watching this meeting is working with them also. So we would probably tie that together. And, and um. You know, have a final outcome of that whole stretch from what would be John Bonadelli's end where he would put his curb and gutter in and his asphalt. From that point going east, it would, it would go past Fred Loco Mercino's piece. Past the proposed intersection at the new alignment of Oakmore and Tulare Avenue.
I, I think some of the concern I've got is, is. You know, take for instance, I'll give you an, for instance, you know where Alford is at and right across the street on the northwest corner of, of Cartmill and Hillman. That's a commercial development too. And that, and that piece of, did I say northwest? I meant north, northeast, southeast.
South, southeast is, is Fred also.
Yes, and that's been how long? That's been fifteen years to twenty years?
Thirty?
Yeah, thank you.
They'll all goes probably twenty-five years old.
Yeah, that would be the concern. Your idea seems. Valid and promising, but there would need to be something built into it that would assure us that. The property, the property won't just sit there and, and the intersection itself won't be developed. The way Caltrans is going to. Ultimately, ultimately from my standpoint, the fear is, I don't want the city to be. Responsible for something that should be handled as part of the development. E- either from the standpoint of Mr. Bonadelli's operation or the commercial development of that particular corner. And we, we've got to find a way to make, to assure us that that's not going to occur.
I think the way that Mr. Nunley has, you know, right now there's a shared burden between, let's say, Bonadelli and Mr. Nunley. Mr. Nunley is offering to take on that full burden in terms of completing the study and then paying his pro rata share or whatever ultimately the cost of the improvements would be. There would be some other pro rata share shared by other developments that are in and around that area. I don't perceive there to be risk to the city where I think the potential issue would be, in that case, because we don't, you know, there's no change in our share of burden. It's just shifted to Mr. Nunley. I think the question becomes a little bit about. When are the impacts, what are the traffic impacts to the roadway system occurring and when are those impacts being mitigated? That goes to your timing question, right? So if all of a sudden there's now more impacts because of future development, whether it's Mr. Bonadelli's development. And we have more traffic impacts, but we don't have those improvements made. We're waiting for those improvements to be made twenty or thirty years. You know, that's. That would be the question, but I, I think to Mr. Nunley's point, he, his engineer is working with the property in order to the east. Who's looking to develop that property. If they're going to want to develop the property, they're going to have additional impacts. They're going to have to mitigate those impacts. At the same time as they're going to want to develop their project. So I think their project is going to probably force Mr. Nunley to have to make his fair share, share contribution at that time would be my guess.
Well, I'll say this, it does me no good to not get this ice study done and, and revamp what we've started. Instead on a piece of two acre commercial corner for twenty years. My, my benefit is, is what I do is I own land or buy land and I try to get it entitled as fastly as possible and develop it or sell it off. And if so, if the city, if the city was to put a, let's call it a, a memorandum of agreement or a lien on the property. With some kind of date on, you know. Hey, this ISO study has to be done or work with the city and it has to be, you know. Submitted to Caltrans within twelve months, which I think is probably what it's going to take.
So you're, you're in a position, the condition of that property is such that a, a performance deed to trust, a first deed to trust could be put on that to see to it that, that. Performance of the agreement between the parties could in fact take place.
I'm willing to put a performance agreement together or development agreement together to release John from any duties of a, of a, a Caltrans letter, whatever. And I'm willing to put a development agreement with a performance and built inside that solely on that commercial property. Cause here's, here's the, here's the issue I have is right now that commercial corner is probably worth X. If I put the improvements in and even if I have to front the entire improvements, that corner is going to be worth three times as much money.
How much do you think that corner is worth right now? With the development that Mr. Bonadelli?
I wouldn't sell it for nine.
For what?
I would not sell it for nine hundred thousand. I think if I get it. Get the improvements now, I think it'd be worth between two point two and two point five. That's, that's what I see all the time. I do this a lot. So I know exactly what that corner would be worth.
Michael, what kind of improvements would his, would their responsibility be for that intersection? What kind of cost?
It all depends on what comes out of the ISO, right? If, if it's the, the type of improvements that have been suggested by the developer, it wouldn't be that much.
What I, what I will commit to also besides what I'm talking here now with the development agreement and then using the land as, you know, as a collateral for the city agreement. I would also agree right now to let John do his improvement drawings and I'll do in tandem my improvement drawings. For just the frontage improvement on my corner and I'll put the curb and gutter and walk in. And so you've got full improvements along the corner. And then if, you know, after we get the ISO study done or the ice study done, whatever it's going to be, if they don't change it again. Then I would sign a development agreement that I would rip that out and redo it if we're wrong, because what Charlie has suggested is we do a turn lane. Eastbound turn lane of the Oakmore, which is probably what Caltrans is going to want. And I would go ahead and put that in. The city would get full improvements from all of John Bonadelli's frontage. I would put the frontage and curb and sidewalk on the commercial corner, wrap it around the corner to Oakmore. So now the city has a full improved roadway with the turn lane. And then whenever Caltrans comes back and does an ice study, if they want a roundabout or a signal or whatever, then I got to bust up out and redo it. And I'll sign an agreement for that.
No matter what happens here though, the ISO study is going to have to take place with Caltrans, isn't it?
Say that again, Dennis.
The ISO is going to have to go forward no matter what happens here. Is that accurate?
Ultimately, Caltrans will require the ISO study to be done.
For those improvements.
Ultimately, ISO, yes, Caltrans is requiring the study to be done for this intersection. Is that correct?
Yeah, the ISO study, so, so you guys, the ISO study is for the intersection, not for. The roadway, and I think Michael could vouch for this, but the roadway on Tulare Avenue, the alignment set on the south side of the road, it's set from. Woodside project next door. We know what that right away is going to be. We just don't know what improvements are going to be coming out of the ISO study. And to compound that with what the city's had the meeting with Caltrans a couple of weeks ago. They don't know what now that intersection of Oakmore is going to be, if it's going to be a three-way intersection or a stoplight or a roundabout. Because now you're moving down the arterial to one twenty-six. And my opinion is that's going to probably be a three-way intersection where you could do a right in, a right out and a left in eastbound. I don't think, I don't know if Caltrans is going to want to have a left out on the Tulare Avenue. That's my opinion. And that's one fix.
Don't you think that'll be the roundabout there at one twenty-six?
One twenty-six, yeah, maybe. Maybe at one twenty-six, but not at Oakmore.
Yeah, it's going to one twenty-six, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm saying at one twenty-six.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm, look, I'm trying to keep a builder here that, that we want to do business with. And wants to do more stuff here and I'm willing to take that burden. Like I said, I'll put the full improvements on my frontage in right now with John. And um, but I want separated improvement drawings, right? But they'll go in together, tandem. And then I'll also take the burden of doing the study and doing any kind of, you know, improvements. Even if I got to front the whole costs, those improvements will get done in a timely manner and, you know, we'll do a development agreement for that.
Well, and I, I think from a legal standpoint, we can put that kind of an agreement together. And then secure it by that property with what's called a performance deed to trust, not. Which basically indicates, you know, in the deed to trust, it also indicates. Any agreement that's secured by the deed to trust itself, which is what you've indicated. So that would be the procedure. And in the agreement, you would incorporate the bond and anything else that.
Well, you can't bond Dennis, you can't bond until the improvement plans are drawn. So that's down the road. You've got to have improvement plans that Michael could do an engineer's estimate. But what you can do is use the collateral of the land with a memorandum of agreement that ties that to. A future performance bond when that work has to be done.
Well, I think Mr. Zamora in his office would be in a position to put, along with the city engineer, put the agreement together. And then make sure we have the, the necessary escrow to put the deed of trust in place on that piece of property. And then be in a position to where what you're proposing from my standpoint makes sense.
I'm okay with that.
Do you have anything to add to that, Megan?
Yeah, I agree. I think that that would need to be in place before you guys could. Agree to what he's asking tonight. I think that, that's the first step is bringing that agreement.
Well, you just do a development agreement. It won't be part of John's subdivision agreement. You guys, I mean, you guys can. I think you guys could vote on it tonight and say that. The development agreement and a condition of John being released from his duty, that a development agreement is negotiated before, between me and the city. That's satisfactory to Michael Miller. And then Michael Miller and I sit down and, and he gets all the things that you guys want in this development agreement. And then we could bring it back to council if you guys want that back to council, but this way John knows he has a project and, and he could continue forward if you guys give that direction.
Let's hear. Mr. Vice Mayor, if we, if we could hear from Mr. Bonadelli.
Yes.
He, he, body language again indicates, I think he's ready to say something, so.
Anything else? Okay, thanks guys.
You're good at reading body language. John Bonadelli, seventy thirty North Fruit, number one oh one Fresno. First and foremost, I also want to thank staff for their efforts to getting this item here to date on the agenda tonight and staff's efforts. Overall with the project Fulton Estates, including the park agreement that was on consent tonight. We're excited to install that park. Now that the development agreements or the fee credit agreement is in place. It'll include amenities like a playground and some other items that the residents are going to be excited about. We're a, Bonadelli is a near eighty-year local Central Valley builder and this is our first project in the city of Tulare. We started improvements May of last year on our first phase. By the end of this year, we expect to have about seventy-five homeowners moved into the community. So there's a lot of strong demand for affordably priced homes in the community. I echo everything Mr. Nunley mentioned earlier, due to the uncertainty of the potential Oakmore realignment to the east. Along with Greg's willingness to do a development agreement on the third phase, which is the commercial aspect of the project. We feel this is a good solution to allow us to move forward with our current, or our future second phase of the residential portion. It'll allow us to do some striping and curb and gutter improvements as well. That was mentioned in the staff report. So there will be some improvements done right now. To Oakmore and, and one thirty-seven. So I'm here to answer any questions as well and, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bonadelli.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any public comment? Anyone on the phone?
I have Mr. Klaus on the line.
He's the traffic engineer, traffic consultant for Mr. Nunley, if you have questions for him.
Okay.
So I have a question for Mr. Bonadelli if you would entertain that for a second.
Megan, you have something to say?
Oh, no, I was just, Melissa had told me to tell you guys that, that the engineer was on the phone.
Bonadelli, would you just share a little bit about the timing of this? So you, you have a phase one project. How many homes do you have currently built? What do you think the timing of the build out of that first phase is and what is the timing in terms of the decision-making for the second phase for you?
Sure, thank you. So with the first phase was ninety-nine lots in total. We phased that into what we call phase one A and phase one B. It was fifty and forty-nine lots or vice versa. The first fifty lots, phase one A get energized by Southern Cal Edison at the end of this month. We'll have those fifty homes moved in. And occupied probably by the third quarter of this year. Phase one B, we started sales in. Around February of this year and we're finishing our street improvements and, and, and going vertical once we get our first round of permits this, this week. I would expect to move about twenty-five phase one B homeowners in this year, which is how I got to the seventy-five total number for the end of the year. The other remaining twenty-four homes would be completed early next year. So. In a perfect world with phase two, I'd like to be starting improvements sometime this summer, once we get out of the, you know, the rain season here. And, and then move in phase two homeowners, which would be that last remaining eighty-five lots around. Second quarter of next year, so about twelve months from now, twelve to, twelve to fifteen months. So I, I, it is a, a project that we would very much like to get started on, to your point.
And I, I assume you appreciate the fact that with the proposal that Mr. Nunley's indicated and obviously you find that acceptable. That's going to take some time for us to get the agreement together, have, have the city attorney accept that. And then put the, the performance deed to trust in place. To then be in a position to release you from those obligations and look solely to Mr. Nunley under the circumstances. Is that going to hold you up? I mean, we can't, I, I know it would be nice to do it tonight, but we don't know what we're voting on tonight because the agreement hasn't been finalized. So just from a practical standpoint, we have to get that outline together and know what we're voting on when we do it and. And have staff present us with an actual agreement approved by the city attorney to accomplish that.
I, I, I understand and I guess thinking it through, my, maybe my one request would be if we could start. Civil improvements, it wouldn't be creating any occupancies of homes, because like I.
What kind of improvements?
Civil improvements, masquerading what utilities onsite. It wouldn't, like I said, I wouldn't be moving homeowners into that second phase until. Next year anyways. So I think that'd be plenty of time to get a development agreement in place between Greg and the city. And currently there's, there isn't a, a paved connection out to, well, there's no connection out to one thirty-seven. The second phase has a connection to Oakmore.
And based on what's been presented to us and the materials and what Michael indicated, it seems to me reasonable to expect. That Caltrans is going to ask for this ISO. Study in any event. So is that something you'll end up doing or Mr. Nunley?
It would be Greg, yes.
Don't you think so, Michael?
That one would be required?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. Caltrans will not issue an encroachment permit to do work for intersection improvements without having gone through that process.
Well, I noticed in the proposed letter that you prepared, it asked them to waive that. That was kind of a reach then is what you're saying. Is that correct?
In my opinion, that's a reach.
Okay. So as we're preparing this development agreement. To shift responsibility from Bon- Bonadelli Homes to Mr. Nunley's property. The ISO hopefully will be. Continue to be obtained, whether it's by him or by you under the circumstances. Is that what you're planning on doing?
Yes, I, I could work with Greg on that. Greg would be running the point on the ISO study. We're not, we haven't submitted civil improvement plans yet for phase two. So, you know, it would take a couple of weeks for. So uh, you know, it would take a couple of weeks for our engineer to draft that anyways. So like I said, I think this could run on concurrent paths uh with the development agreement that would be put in place between Mister Nunley and the city of Tulare.
I don't think, counsel, we would have a problem accepting civil plans at risk. Michael, would you disagree with that?
I don't see an issue with it, no.
And following uh. My luck on what appears to be what people are going to do, I think Ms. Mata now is ready to come up. And uh, her body language indicates that she's ready to say something.
Be a good poker player.
Yeah.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council, Darlene Mata, President Vaisalya. Um, I just wanted to make clear, it it sounded like perhaps the council thinks that we would be able to start the ISO study immediately. And I think that that's part of the problem is that Caltrans is gonna wanna know what's gonna happen potentially at future Oakmore. And one thirty seven, is that a roundabout? Is it, you know, what's that, what's that traffic look like there? To be able to adequately evaluate what they may want at Oakmore and or current Oakmore and one thirty seven. Um, so I don't know that it's gonna start immedi- immediately, and that's what causes the problem for Mister Bonadelli is that there's a delay in that. Um, and we're caught between if we are gonna realign Oakmore, what it, what does that eventually look like? I just want to make clear that I don't think that we can start that study immediately. Am I correct, Michael?
In our discussions, uh, we had the district director and a deputy director. Involved in those discussions. They they indicated a willingness to take us at our word that that is our intent. To move forward with that realignment and take that into account through the ISO. We may need to provide a letter to that effect, and I would certainly be willing to do that, given council's direction.
That letter would enable them to proceed, get ahead of and proceed with the ISO, and is that correct?
Yes.
I need just wanted to weigh in, so um on that particular part, if you could, Melissa, maybe put the map back up on the realignment. Um, I think for me, I'm trying to get an understanding. I appreciate Mister Nunley uh his willingness to to uh move forward. But what I'm trying to figure out is the agreement would continue to have those uh bullet points in the staff report. That would construct the curb and gutter, re-stripe one thirty seven at Oakmore and all that. Would that still be part of the agreement? Because if if we're looking at this map and we're looking to realign Oakmore to where one twenty six is. You know, first of all, a lot of questions of, you know, do, what what's it gonna entail to to get that property? Do we own it? Eminent domain, you know, there's a lot of factors that would go into Caltrans feeling comfortable. That that's gonna happen someday. I mean, I, when I talked to Mark, you know, he mentioned it could happen sometime from now, that realignment. So for me, I guess, and I'm not a developer, you know, by any means, you know, but but I guess for me it would make sense is, well. If we're looking to have. I don't know if you wanna call them temporary improvements on one thirty seven in Oakmore, as have been stated in the staff report that Mister Nunley and the developers are willing to do. Quite honestly, I don't, I personally don't have faith in Caltrans in terms of them changing their minds. You know, look at what's going on at Morrison and one thirty seven, right? We were set to go. We had a development, we had to release homes. There was a promise that before anybody moved in, that intersection would be ready to go. And Caltrans is now whole throwing a whole, you know, roundabout that we're doing. So I I don't have faith in Caltrans for that per se, in that sense that the improvements that they make may not be adequate. Or may not, or may have to be done uh or redone, done in a different way, and then who's liable for those? Cause we we we're having a discussion and and from what I read in the staff report and from what I heard Mister Nunley talk about, I support that effort. I mean, I appreciate him putting his his property up for collateral and willing to do an agreement. But my only concern is that there are a lot of other factors. More importantly, that realignment, that, you know, I called the second Mooney Curve, you know, gave it a little nickname for that. Uh, how do we, who owns that property? Are those folks gonna fight for the realignment? Or or is that, uh, you know, something that's gonna happen, you know, twenty years from now? I mean, so there's a lot of factors and I appreciate uh the developers, you know, developers saying, hey, well, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen, when that's gonna happen. But I I I'm just trying to understand what are we looking to agree on? And I wanna help to, you know, Mister Bonadelli with this development. I appreciate him willing to build in our city. And hopefully this is a good, a good uh experience that he considers other projects in our city. But I'm just trying to. Figure out, cause there's just a lot of unknowns, you know, and a lot of people deciding in those unknowns.
So I I don't, Michael, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm gonna ask you to add to this comment. I don't think Caltrans is gonna be looking from the city, a letter to say the city's committing to build. To create this realignment and to build it concurrent, for example, with Mister Bonadelli's project or anything like that. I I think what Caltrans would be looking for from the city is that the city council has said, yes, this is our intended course of action. We intend to realign this Oakmore to one twenty six. And then, Michael, what would be effectively the way that they would document it beyond just the letter? Would it be make it part of the CIP program, adopt it into the general plan circulation element? What what would they be looking for as the official action that bona fide that, or is it simply a letter from council that says this is what we wanna do?
From our discussions, I don't think it would be any more than that, a letter from the city indicating that's our intention. And then they would reflect that in the ISO, ISO P.
So that's pretty simple. Now, you're correct, we don't, that doesn't mean we're committing to building this in any particular timeframe. But it would allow, to Michael's point, as the engineers prepare the ISO, they know that that will be there someday. So now it it sets the correct context and parameters for their evaluation.
And I guess just just to cut off my final thoughts on this, uh, so given that trust relationship with Caltrans that, hey. You know, we we uh we know that you're gonna do this someday and and we'll put that as part of our uh study. Would that then allow for those those uh offers, I guess, the offer of the uh. Constructed curb and gutter, the sidewalk and re-stripe, all those things that need to be done to move the project forward. At least when it comes to one thirty seven, would would those be okay to move forward with uh as part of that agreement? All coming that you guys decide.
We, if I could interject, we don't know yet what Caltrans is is going to require based on the answer. When you say those things, tho- those are what they were proposing to do in anticipation of what Caltrans does. And what we're trying to avoid is Caltrans coming back and saying, no, 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 not that, you gotta do this. And Mister Mister Nunley's indicating that he'll pledge his property to cover those costs so that the city doesn't have to.
Right, and I think what what I'm trying to avoid at least is sim- something similar to what happened with Farrar Estates. In other words, there was this whole idea of we gotta make these improvements. Uh, you know, we're going to uh, you know, build them and then build houses and have people live there. It happened in a in a in a reverse order, and I'm just trying to sure, trying to figure out what can we do to help the developer finish his project. But at the same time, make this, those improvements on Oakmore. And again, that's go back to my point, we don't know, right? Caltrans can come back and change their mind or say something different. So um, you know, we're kinda stuck where, at least in my mind, we're stuck where we need those improvements to go into that development. There's an idea of what they could be, but then as Mister Madero says, they might be totally suddenly different. And then who ends up having to do those? I mean, is, would the, would the developers go back and say, well, hey, you re-stripped this and they don't want it, so now you gotta fix it?
Mister Nunley has said he would go back and make those improvements and either pay for all of them and then get reimbursed, or he would. He would put up his pro-rata share of his cost for those improvements.
Cause I did hear that he would put in improvements, curb and gutter, to do it at the same time as a development, so it's all one transition smooth. And if those things need to be changed, then he would change them. So that's, that's that part of the.
But he won't do that until we find out what Caltrans, I mean, he, I would assume he's not gonna spend money doing that. Until he knows what Caltrans is gonna.
I think you said he would, I, well, if you could clarify, I thought I heard you said you would, and then if you needed to change him out. Cause you you felt that idea, so basically, i- i- you know, uh continuing the curb and gutter all the way through the through the uh frontage.
Bonadelli puts his curb and gutter down Tulare Avenue and Oakmore, then I would do, so we're, let let me back up a second. Bonadelli can't just go to the city and say, here, city, here's a set of improvement plans. The city's not gonna get a set of improvement plans on Tulare Avenue until Caltrans signs them off. We're gonna be, there's gonna be a courtesy that we're gonna give these to Michael, and Michael's gonna say, okay, well, that's what Caltrans wants. Bonadelli still has to get improvement plans done with Caltrans and work with Caltrans and what's acceptable. And that's why I think Charlie thinks they're gonna do a turn lane in front of my commercial development. And that's why I said I would do in tandem, work with Bonadelli, Charlie, with the ICE study. The ICE study would go in back of what we would do for road improvements, cause he doesn't need to do an ICE study for his for his right away improvements. That's the ultimate right away. So that right away ain't gonna get wider there on the south side. So it may be at the turn lane, but I'm I'm gonna take care of that in my commercial point. So. Going back to that, we can't just say, here, we're gonna go do this. We gotta go to Caltrans. Caltrans is just gonna tell us, okay, well, John's is gonna be easy, but in mine in tandem, they're gonna say, okay, well, you wanna go in and put this in. You're gonna do a concrete curb and you're gonna do this, or you're gonna do an asphalt curb temporary, cause we don't know what the ICE study's gonna say. So they're gonna log me down to what's gonna have to happen on that intersection. The ICE study is for the intersection, not for his frontage on Oakmore or on Tulare Avenue. And then the whole point I wanna make is, you know, with what what we're offering here, what I'm offering here is for you guys to put. A development agreement together, use the property as collateral, until we get to an improvement stage where we could do a bond, and I'm willing to do that. Like, again, I wanna do these improvements, cause I wanna sell that corner or build that corner, probably sell the corner, right? I'm not a gas station guy or a guy that wants to do something like that on that corner. So the city's gonna get either, if Bonadelli can do his project, the city's gonna get those improvements on Tulare Avenue and Oakmore. Pretty much right now. And underground those poles on Oakmore and clean all this up. And if we can't come to a resolution, then that's gonna stay like it is for who knows how long. I'm not a home builder. I don't wanna be a home builder. And I don't know, you know, if we got a guy that wants to do this and put these improvements in, then, you know, I I hope we can do that.
Yeah, and it's from my standpoint, we're, I mean, we're trying to find a way here.
No, I understand, Dennis, I understand.
But, you know, you, for instance, this roundabout that we were dealing with uh just down the road from you, I think, came in at, what, one point two? Something like that? That the city, how much, how much that cost the city?
The roundabout is uh more like one point six.
That's how much it cost the city?
Yeah, so the city was into that for one point six. And we're taking collateral on your situation, not that they're the same thing, but that's how these things balloon on a nine hundred thousand dollar piece of property.
Well, let me, let me, let me.
The city didn't pay one.
Let me say this.
That was the total project.
I mean, it doesn't matter if it costs, you know, one point six or one million dollars or three million dollars. Uh, at the end of the day. There's a nexus study that ties to a development project that pays for their fair share. They might cover that cost upfront, but the city is going to ultimately pay for their fair share. And then collect it through impact fees on the other corners or the other parts of the development on that property. That's what we pay impact fees for. So just because something costs one point six million dollars or one million dollars or ten million dollars. If you got a developer that's willing to front that cost, which I said I am. And post a bond once we get improvement plans from Caltrans and 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 we dictate what that improvement's gonna be, and Bonadelli wants to put his stuff in right now. I don't see where the city, I don't see where the city has anything to jeopardize here with this scenario. Especially when I'm gonna put the full improvements in, that when John's putting his in, if if Caltrans is ours, and I think he will, I don't think that'll be a problem. So the city's gonna get a fully improved street on both streets with the corner fully improved and probably a turn lane. And at my expense, if I have to tear it out with Caltrans.
And that was, that was my point, that that that's what I had heard and I was comfortable with that, because he's taking a risk. But obviously, he knows more than I do what Caltrans may want, his engineers know, they've been doing this for a while. So that was my point that that he made the statement that he would make the improvement along with the the developer to take care of that whole street. And if need be, if Caltrans came back and decided, hey, we need something else after the study, then that's where his liability would be. To improve it, not on the city. So I just wanted to to clarify that, that that's, he's taking that risk.
And I think the only thing to clarify what you had said earlier was I, in in the years that I've been on this council. I I've found our relationship with Caltrans to be excellent. I think Michael, Michael's got a great relationship with the Caltrans people also. I mean, we may have had issues with this roundabout, but that was for a variety of reasons that didn't include solely Caltrans. Uh, so, so when, when the statement is made that I don't fully trust Caltrans. I I trust Caltrans and I think staff trusts Caltrans and we try to work with them.
Well, you know, and I appreciate that. I mean, I've I've worked with Caltrans when I worked in the legislation for twenty years. So, I mean, I've dealt with Caltrans in a lot of different ways and, yeah, I agree with the city, they've been great. And, you know, I've, I got a good relationship with Mister Navarro and working on some stuff on Inyo, but just in general, I mean, I worked across the state. With Caltrans on a number of projects and unfortunately, things change and sometimes they're.
I personally think, guys, I don't care what we do here tonight, you're not gonna fix Oakmore and Tulare Avenue anytime soon. You got three intersections that's in the county, you don't have the right of way to do a roundabout or a signal. And if you did a signal around about, where's it gonna go to the north? You're 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 gonna be in a local street in those houses. So you're not gonna have a roundabout there I would bet money on. You're probably not gonna have a signal. Caltrans, I'm gonna go back and say, Caltrans ultimately is probably gonna have a three-way intersection where you cannot turn Oakmore on to Tulare Avenue. I don't know if they talked about that at the, at the meeting, but, you know, maybe a signal. But even if you wanna do a signal, is is the city ready to go eminent domain? You know, three other corners or two other corners to to a signal in, and what does that take? That that gets him out of town, the way he, and he's gone.
Well, that's a Caltrans issue.
What's that?
Caltrans puts in the signal, not the city of Tulare.
Caltrans is gonna be the lead on this, it's gonna be me and the city. I mean, everyone has to work in conjunction and together to get this done. No, no, not one person is gonna go do this. The city's not gonna go do this by themselves, right?
Yeah, we didn't with the round.
Right, and I mean, you guys want development, but you're not gonna go do a roundabout by yourselves. I think Woodside's shipping in and 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 I don't know if Caltrans is shipping any money at that, at that roundabout at Morrison.
They did.
Yeah, Caltrans.
Here's what I don't wanna do, and this is what I talked to Mark originally. When I signed up to do this project and we went through the conditions, I absolutely was adamant about not making the same, the same mistake with the city that Woodside make. I won't, I'm not gonna sit here and promise that I'm gonna do something. I would rather say, look, we'll just table this. I'm not gonna sit up in here and tell you that, hey, I'm gonna do this. I wanna know what my conditions are and my conditions have changed, and like I said, the goalpost have moved, not because of me. Because the city's elected to not take out twelve, twelve to fifteen houses at their advantage of saving that money. At the detriment of Fulton Estates is the way I look at it. And though, not, not to be insulting, but that's a fact. You guys, the cities, the city is going and realigning this, it says it right in the staff report that I just read. So that they don't interfere with those houses and go through all that process. That's a disaster for the city. Look what you guys are doing at Western Prosperity, right? You told me what that was, and I wanna repeat it, but and nothing, nothing vulgar, so. But it's, you know, it's uh, you know, it's just a disaster, kinda what Jose said. But, you know, I don't wanna be in that position. I would rather just say, hey, you know what, John, I'm sorry, but. We can't make this commitment and you can't build another eighty six houses and I'm sorry. Cause I don't wanna stand up here and say, hey, all all I can do is what I can do and say, look, guys, I've already started an ICE study. I've been working on it for probably a year. You guys could ask Charlie Klaus, he's on the line still, and he's in South Carolina, so it's one o'clock in the morning in South Carolina. But. You know, and and uh. You know, I don't know what else to do. I'm offering you guys everything I can offer.
Counsel, what I, you know, what I would suggest, it's starting to get late. If counsel thinks there's merit to what Mister Nunley is proposing, I do. I think what we would like from counsel is direction to work with Greg to go ahead and put this development agreement together. You know, an indication from counsel of support that, yes, this is the direction you'd like to move. It allows Mister Bonadelli to submit his plans at his risk, his civil plans, so that he can keep his project moving forward. I would encourage Greg and his attorney to put the draft agreement together for we, so we can review it that way. It's on your clock and your time and you're moving it forward more quickly than we are. That would give us the chance as staff to to go through that agreement and redline it and mark it up with the city attorney's office. And then bring something back to you in the near future so that we have all the tangible components. I hear, I've heard all of your concerns. I think we can address all of your concerns and we could bring that back, hopefully in a timely manner. So that you have something tangible and specific to vote on, rather than we're sort of talking. so that you have something tangible and specific to vote on, rather than we're sort of talking.
Through this.
Yeah, we're talking through this. This is not really the place to talk through it. If you think what he's offering has merit, and we do, we think you should give us direction to go with, miss, miss, work with Mr. Nunley to prepare that agreements and bring it back for your consideration.
And I think we need to send the letter that Michael talked about to Caltrans.
Not, not this letter.
No.
No, no, not this.
Not this letter.
You send a letter to Caltrans, Dennis, you're not gonna get an answer, and if you get an answer, it's not gonna be what anyone wants.
No, no, that, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the other one he indicated for the purposes of the ISO that is gonna have to take place. They need to hear from the city of Tullary that that realignment is what we're gonna do in the future. Because that affects your intersection.
Yes.
What, what did they say on that call, Michael? Did they say the realignment is acceptable? I mean, I, I don't even think they care about the realignment, do they?
They said that, uh, it was something they were open to, and that it, they agreed that it would impact the level of improvements that they would require at the existing intersection of Oakmore and State Route one thirty-seven.
So I would recommend that you give us direction to draft that letter and send that letter to Caltrans, because that'll tee up the ISO study.
That.
Agreement?
So just, yeah, my, my proposal is that, uh, the city engineer sends a letter, and that, uh, the city engineer, legal counsel, starts, uh, preparing the development agreement in conjunction with Mr. Bonadelli and Mr. Nunley, so that we can be in a position to adequately uh, secure a performance deed of trust of that agreement utilizing the property that Mr. Nunley's indicating as collateral. That's what you're looking for, isn't it, Greg?
I'm satisfied with that, Dennis. I, I'm not up here to say, hey, we'll do this. I wanna put my, you know, land where my mouth is at, let's say that, and say, look, I'm, I'm willing to take that gamble and get it done and.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that, the direction.
So that, that allows both of them to move forward.
Consensus.
That's what we wanted.
I think what it does is.
Mr. Bonadelli, is, is that what you're looking for here?
That's fine with me. If we could just get the development agreement drafted and.
Get the ball rolling.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I really do. And appreciate the city's willingness to work with all of us and, and keep this moving forward. It, it means a lot to us. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate you.
So I think, uh, Mr., Mr. Mayor, uh, the city attorney said that we did need a motion, so I will, Mr. Maderos.
I made the motion.
And then I'll second it, yes.
All in favor, say, say aye.
Aye.
Pass four to zero.
Megan got that.
Could we continue this to the meeting, the first meeting in May?
I, I'm not, I'm not sure we're going to be ready for that. It depends on.
There's, there's an agreement that's got, there's steps that have to be taken for that purpose, but we're headed in the right direction in that.
Okay, they'll just, we noticed it, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have, uh, two more items on the agenda, and it's now ten o'clock. Does counsel wanna hear these two or table them to the next meeting?
I think Mr. Harmon's been waiting to, waiting for a while to go on to his item, so.
Next item, food giveaway events downtown, uh, fifteen point two, be Mario.
Yes, I will keep this brief, given how late it is, but essentially, um, staff's been made aware of a situation that's been developing, it's been happening, but it seems to be increasing in frequency, especially in the downtown. And that's these food giveaway events that are put on by, uh, sometimes it's churches, but we've had local businesses do them as well. It's nonprofits, and it's creating issues. Um, these are events that are occurring on private property. So private property, if it's all contained, we usually don't have a, like, an event process that we put them through. However, these, um, food giveaways are having impacts on the public right of way, on sidewalks, backing traffic on, on the streets, affecting parking lots that are shared by other businesses. And so, um, the items brought before you to, to make counsel aware and to seek direction on kind of your, your, uh, what council's consensus is regarding, uh, direction in this manner, whether, whether it's drafting a policy or procedures or altering existing event permitting procedures. Uh, but that's, that's really just the introduction of it. Um, I do understand Mr. Dar, Mr. Harmon's here to talk about it, and Mark may have a few words.
Yeah, no, that's exactly it. I think we really need to hear from Mr. Harmon, counsel, if, uh, you're open to that.
Mario, where's it happening at downtown?
Um, the ones I've been made aware, I think there's a restaurant in the tower that's been giving away food. I believe there's a church, uh, gosh, and actually, John will probably be more knowledgeable. There are two churches, right, downtown?
So, uh, John Harmon, uh, director at the Tullary Downtown Association. Um, yeah, so I brought this issue to, to Mark, uh, mainly because we've had lots of phone calls, lots of complaints at our office. And it was my understanding, it's been three or four years ago, I think. I think Terry, you were on council, uh, Jose, you were on council. And, uh, there was, uh, uh, I guess it must have been kind of an informal moratorium that was placed on these type of events in the downtown. And that worked well for us. Uh, fortunately, the city had enough, uh, had enough reasons to establish the campground out on O Street, which helped a lot. And then also, uh, in a genius move, told, uh, the NGOs and other supply services to the homeless that they needed to do that out of this, uh, campground. And that really helped a lot to clean up the downtown and uh, to make it a much more viable, much more secure place, and a much more inviting to the public. Um, so what we're seeing is another round of, uh, people who wanna do good, who wanna do something important for the community, and they wanna use, uh, you know, areas of the downtown where, um, it's having an impact on our commercial businesses, uh, parking resources and things of that nature. And what, what our board and others felt, and myself felt, that the moratorium was, uh, was of significant value to us. Um, we already host, uh, two entities that are doing distributions of this type. We have Salvation Army on L Street, and we also have, uh, emergency aid over on, uh, N or, oh, I think it's on N Street. And so they're essentially doing the same thing. And what we would like to see is these church groups or private entities, uh, either partner with those people or do these distributions down, uh, by the campgrounds, uh, because it'll have less impact on the commercial district there in, in the downtown area. And so that, that's what we're seeking here is to, is to see some codification of, um, how these events should be handled, uh, so that, uh, we can make a recommendation to the organizers, and they'll know what to do and, you know, what the ordinances are that impact them.
I think probably one of the main reasons this is happening is that there's, there is some increase in the number of individuals who are in the downtown rather than at the encampment. And so you're look, you're looking at a large, you know, there's a, a gap between where they are and where they're getting fed at the encampment. So if the Salvation Army and emergency aid are willing to host these other entities that are giving food, it would provide that for the downtown uh, unhoused, because there's a big number of downtown people that are unhoused as well.
Yeah, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I, but I do believe there needs to be something in the, in, in the way of an ordinance that directs these people, that that's what they need to do, or that they have to do.
And, and I know the Salvation Army doesn't have people there all the time, neither does emergency aid. So maybe there's some way to work with those two organizations. That is the distribution point, and maybe those churches can assist in, in doing that.
We would have no problem at all being the liaison between those entities and the groups that wanna do these kind of distributions. We would just like to see them, uh, you know, taking place somewhere outside the.
Right, some kind of, uh, teeth to the, just saying, go over there, because that's the ordinance says, that's where the food will be.
Well, it makes it a lot easier, because, yeah, we can, we can point to something in writing and say, here, this is what you need to do.
Well, you're both talking about an ordinance, and I, I guess, bottom line is, can we put an ordinance together, together, Mario, that'll address the need and, uh, deal with the situation?
Yeah, that is certainly an option. Um, uh, we looked, we couldn't find anything codified that actually is a moratorium on uh, to the effect of, of Mr., what Mr. Harmon's talking about. So that is certainly a direction. Um, the closest thing I could think of is we have the site plan review, uh, but that's really not meant to address. Site plan review is, is really for events that are in the public right of way, or, um, you know, development, uh, type of applications. But that is, that could be a place it could live, could live elsewhere in the ordinance, but yes, that, that would be an option.
So we currently, counsel, as you know, have an anti-camping ordinance. And we are in the process, we, staff has revised that ordinance, and we're ready to bring that back to council to add locations where you cannot have camping, and to add the procedure or process by which, uh, in anticipation of the shelter coming online, uh, how we're gonna hand individuals that are found camping on public property in a right of way. I don't know that this is the best place for that type of ordinance to live, is it in the anti-camping section? I do think we need to think about it a little bit more if you wanna have an ordinance. I, and I would defer to the city attorney's office about prohibiting churches from being able to, to, to do feedings. Uh, I don't know if that's gonna be a violation of any constitutional rights or not, but I, I would want us to sit and think through that a little bit.
There's a difference between prohibiting feeding.
And where you feed them.
And directing feeding.
Where you feed them, yeah. The location.
Yeah.
What that's taking.
Yeah, right, right. So the point would be all feedings, for the sake of argument, whether it's all feeding citywide or all feeding, or any feeding that would occur in the downtown. We could just say, I, two, just, two, two different geographic areas. In either case, we would be directing them to, to go to the encampment to do their feedings. That's what we're talking about doing. I just wanna make sure legally, from, and I'm not sure you're ready to answer that question, but I wanna make sure we would be okay doing that.
Yeah, I think just generally speaking, if you're limiting their, you know, if they, if they, let's say they feed people at their church service, like, if we get involved in that, that's gonna be an issue. I think this, what we're talking about here kind of morphs more into like the special event type, um, category, and, you know, cities all over require even churches to get special event permits when they host events at their church that, you know, are open to the public. And so, um, I think it would fit more in that kind of category where you could, where you could limit or put, uh, restrictions on it. But we can dive into it deeper, you know, as we craft whatever council, uh, directs us to draft.
I think, oh.
I mean, I, I'm reading body language. It looks like the assistant.
Sorry, I'm like tap dancing over here. Uh, temporary use permit would be what we could do for private property, and then it can live with special events, um, for in the right of way, and we can just have the language mirrored since it's a land use thing, and it can be neutral to the type of speech or the entity doing it.
That sounds like, uh, our new assistant city manager just volunteered to come up with an ordinance that will satisfy us. And I, I, I think we have consensus in that regard that he should go forward.
Yeah, but I, I'm so, I'm so trying to understand, John, I'm over here, right here, Jose, in front of you. I'm trying to understand, uh, how big of an issue it is. I mean, what are we talking about? We talking about dozens of?
Well, there's one, one entity.
I, I, I'm in downtown a lot more, and I don't see that. I don't, where, where, you know, where is it happening?
One entity is planning on doing one on a monthly basis. And, and they reached out to me, and, uh, they're planning on adding a live band, they're planning on adding a beer garden for, uh, the use of people that are there ostensibly to collect, uh, boxes of free food. So I'm like, I'm not quite sure what their objective is.
This is a church?
This is not a church. This is a private, private business. So I'm not really sure what their objective is there, but I thought, well, maybe it's so that people get the free food so they can spend more money on the beer or something.
Yeah, I mean.
But I, I think, I feel like they're kind of at cross purposes, but the main problem that's having is they're bringing five hundred people and, or five hundred vehicles into that area. It consumes all the parking.
So, so this isn't for the homeless. I don't see people homeless driving vehicles.
I'm gonna classify them as working.
All right, so, so similar to what some of, like, the, uh, food bank does at Roosevelt. They set up at Roosevelt Elementary School once a month, and they bring a truckload of fresh fruit, bread, whatever.
Right.
And they give it to the parents at the school.
Right.
So as the kids pick up their, the kids pick up their kids, they can pick up some fresh produce to help them get by.
Yeah.
So that, that's the, the food bank out of Exeter, right?
Yeah, and we don't.
So, but, but is that, is that who's doing it downtown? Because I, I see their schedules, and I've never seen them downtown.
The, uh, no, they're not doing it.
Okay, so who's bringing five hundred cars?
Uh, well, it's, it's the Salon Vandango in the, um, in the Tower Square is one of them. So he used to work for a radio station. He said, oh, we used to do these giveaways all the time.
Right.
So, and, and the giveaway itself isn't a problem, but what we're having is people calling us and saying, my customers can't get into my business, I don't have any place for my employees to park, all the parking's taken up down here. So we have four or five hundred cars converging on Tower Square.
Time, not, not a daily basis.
Not on a daily basis, no.
Cause I mean, I, I think it's an issue, but I don't think it elevates in my mind to an ordinance. I mean, it could be something, we work with those folks. There could be other things, but.
So, well, this is, so this is what happens, what we see happen is one starts, and then another one cropped up. And then another, uh, uh, religious organization, uh, leased a building, and when, uh, one of our board members, Don LeBaron, talked to them, they said, yeah, we feed the homeless. So now we're starting to see that influx of organizations that wanna come in and use private property surrounded by public property to feed the homeless or whatever. And we already know that that, what that's going to do is, it's gonna draw people to that area rather than say the O Street and Camden, and then the future, the navigation center. So we'd like to get out ahead of this problem and establish that there are certain places that you can do that. So for instance, instead of having it at Tower Square, um, we would prefer to see them coordinate with, say, Salvation Army or, you know, Tullary Emergency Aid and do it outside those.
So there's two issues. There's the homeless that don't have cars, that someone says, hey, you're hungry, come, we're gonna feed you. So that's one issue that people don't want homeless downtown.
Right.
And then there's another issue where low-income, working-class folks will get a bag of food just to get through the weed.
Right.
So those are two different things. So I, I, I can see that folks don't want homeless, they don't want homeless within twenty miles of their self.
There, there's a difference between, between the food to you.
Yeah, you're kind of victimizing.
And people that are working within that, that scope of things, that, that, that environment. But there's no differentiation for a business owner that can't get his customers into his business. They just see cars everywhere, and they're there, that event runs four or five hours, and it starts at two or three o'clock in the afternoon. So you have a business with business hours from, say, ten AM to six PM, and there's a chunk of time there for three or four hours that they cannot access. Their customers can't access the parking. That parking lot is completely full. So all we're asking is, hey, is there a way that we can, uh, say to that individual that wants to do that, hey, you can do that. We think there's a need for that. We just don't want it taking place in a, in a main commercial corridor or, you know, area where there's commercial businesses. It's much better to do it over on L Street or over on N Street, because there's not a lot of businesses in that area. So there can be a lot of cars parked over there, and it's not gonna, you know, it's not gonna interfere with anybody's business. That's all we're saying.
Counsel, if, if it was all right with you, if you're comfortable with this, I would suggest that we have our new assistant city manager, who has a lot of experience, uh, coming from a larger city, for example, with this topic, uh, work with our community development director and our city attorney's office and John to sort of parse this out a little bit. I, I think it's correct. We're seeing sort of two different things. I'm not sure if we could do one thing that captures the whole picture, but I think we need to have a little more internal working with John to kind of slice this up and dice this up and figure out, you know, how best for us to handle it. I think we could do that pretty quickly and come back to you with, you know, some proposed language to make sure it's in line with what the business owners and properties downtown are seeking, with what our attorney believes is, is defend, legally defendable, and hopefully what counsel sees as addressing the concerns you might have.
Without being so broad that it would, it would deal with the concerns that I'm hearing from Mr. Segal. I, I'm, I would support that. So you're, you're going like this, is that?
Yeah, yeah, I just, we don't, one thing is that the encampment, uh, the foods that come into the encampment is only for the residents of the encampment. So you need to keep that in mind. So we can't send a bunch of people over there to eat at the encampment.
Right, right.
So just to delineate, you know, the purpose of the feeding at the encampment is for the residents.
I, I merely use that as an example of, you know, how the NGOs were sent out there. That works great. Again, we have Salvation Army and we have, uh, Tullary Emergency Aid. Would be good to see those people coordinate, you know, the ones that wanna do this type of stuff to coordinate with those two entities.
John, they drive up and then get out and walk up and get the food, and go back to their cars, and they get it.
No, they get in line and they stand in line. That's where, one of the issues that, that we're running into. The distribution process apparently is very slow. And, um, so I went by there one day uh, when they were doing one, the, uh, entire west side of the, of the Tower Square parking lot was completely full of cars. And, uh, they had a line that extended from the front of the restaurant on the west side of the Tower Square all the way back to K Street. So, uh, and they had people spilling out of the Tower Square onto the sidewalks of K Street. So they're standing there waiting, and I think what's happening is that the food distribution starts at three, but people are showing up at one o'clock in the afternoon to get in line. And so the parking lot starts to fill up, and that's conflicting with the business owners and, you know, their customers' access to their buildings.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I, I'm, for the sake of moving on, I, I mean, we. Mister Vice Mayor, I I'm for the sake of moving on, I I mean, we can. I I could pull up. The horse here. Perhaps the assistant city man, we could follow what's been indicated and. Let let this come back to us at a later time.
Fine, but I had another question for Mister Harman.
Well, go ahead.
This uh, the church is the northeast corner of Cross. And Blackstone. They have some kind of a food giveaway and you see the vehicles at eight o'clock in the morning. They run from Blackstone all the way up to.
That was the report I got.
Yeah, and and that's at least once a month, sometimes I think twice a month. I've never seen them go past there like they drive around into the church, which has their own parking lot. So I don't know how they do their distribution. But the cars are off the road. There's no people wandering around.
Yeah, well, and I do believe, I I want to say they started that during COVID. And they've just stayed with that, you know, with that process. So the cars line up and then they distribute the the food as the cars drive through. But a but again, that's outside of a business district. They're not competing for, you know, limited resources in the way of parking stalls.
I see Steve shaking his head back there since he walks that area all the time.
Staff does have some concerns about that event as well because that that's not city personnel that authorize traffic control. Or police or it's, I think, individuals with vests on. There's enormous liability there, but I know we've had some complaints, even when our fire trucks are trying to get through.
I think we can work this out, counsel, if you want to, just with the consensus. You have it.
Alright, thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Last item on the agenda is fifteen point three. Mid-year budget review and approval of something most appropriations requests. Mark, this is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'll allow Jacob, our Jacob Del Cid, our budget manager, to come to the. Couldn't help him, so I apologize.
You have three minutes.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, House members and members of the public still watching. Um, a- as noted, uh, I and Jacob Del Cid will be presenting the mid-year budget review for fiscal year twenty twenty five. I'd like to thank Jacob uh for his work in preparing the staff report and related information for this. For this review. He's uh done a lot in a very short period of time with the with the city. Oh, I'm sorry, I need the uh. Thank you. Either one? So we'll begin with a comparison of revenues and expenditures as of December thirty first for the. Uh, for the current and prior year. Uh, before I start though, I want to make a couple of housekeeping comments. Uh, first of all, I'll be rounding numbers. Um, uh, so if you have any question or if you don't understand what I'm, uh, if you can't connect the number that's in in a table that I'm referencing. Uh, because I'm rounding, please let me know when I can I can clarify. Also throughout the presentation, you'll see numbers in red in the difference and various variance columns. Uh, this is intended to indicate that a difference or variance has a negative impact upon fund balance. So it's clear. Uh, we all learned in elementary school that when a small number is subtracted from a larger number, the result is positive. Uh, but ele- elementary school didn't prepare us for budgets. Where a positive in revenues is good, but a positive or an increase in expenditures is bad. Um, and it does tend to confuse folks sometimes when they when they see a negative and it's it seems like a a good thing. Um, and also before reviewing general fund totals, I'll note, oops, we start to move here. I'll I'll note that. Now, a considerable variance exists between the current and prior years utility user tax revenues posted. Which at the time of agenda posting was thought to be possibly due to posting errors or delay in the timing of posting. Uh, but that these revenues would be found to be slightly lower for the current year. As the city U city U U T consultant has projected a modest decline in them. That's the reason why we didn't put those numbers into uh into the the table or in the staff report, just because we we didn't have confidence in them. At least as far as comparing them goes. Uh, staff has informed, uh, I'm sorry, since that time, however, staff has determined the difference may be due. To a removal of the exemption or cap previously paced placed upon charges to high consumers of utilities. Staff has confirmed the consultant whose estimates, uh, who estimates these revenues of the elimination of the cap. And requested a revised projection if appropriate. Uh, if the consultant did not account for the removal of the cap in its previous estimates, a higher estimate is likely. So it it could be good news coming. With respect to utilities user tax. That those prefaces are probably going to take as long as the rest of the presentation uh combined. So, but I did feel it was important to give you some of those uh heads up on those things. Okay, with that, uh, the general funds' primary sources of revenue are the sales and use tax. District transactions and use tax, property taxes, utility users tax. And property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees or VLF. During the first six months of the current fiscal year, these revenues excluding UUTs. Uh, were approximately twenty million dollars combined. Five hundred thousand dollars below fiscal year twenty twenty four's total at the same point. While overall general fund revenues ex- again excluding UUTs, uh, total twenty seven million dollars. Approximately three hundred thousand more than last year.
And if I may, I'd like to touch on a couple of the revenue categories that you see in this table, um, just to provide some more detail for you. Uh, the first thing I'd like to touch on is other revenues. As you'll notice in the presentation, we are showing a variance of about a million dollars. From fiscal year twenty four to fiscal year twenty five. That's largely attributed to uh. A state grant that we received in fiscal year twenty four for a new for the purchase of a new fire apparatus. That we are not anticipating to receive in fiscal year twenty five. So that's largely attributed to that one day in time appearance. Um, I'll switch gears to some positive factors. Um. The the most significant positive factor that we're seeing is an increase in property taxes, largely due to assessed valuations increasing. And tied to that is property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees is also increasing at mid-year and due to assessed values as well.
At uh also as of December thirty one, twenty twenty four, uh expenditures total thirty point one million dollars. Uh, an increase of two point nine million dollars compared to the previous fiscal year. With personnel expenses up one point seven million dollars and maintenance and operations or M and O expenditures up. One point three million dollars.
Touching on that salaries and benefits difference of about one point seven million dollars. Uh, were largely attributed to primarily attributed to seven hundred thousand dollars in increase in fiscal year twenty four to fiscal year twenty five and. Unfunded liability payments that have increased in fiscal year twenty five and also negotiated compensation increases. The variance in M and O is largely driven by about three hundred thousand dollars in increase in professional technical services uh citywide. And two hundred thousand dollars in unplanned expenses for Zoom Park operations. The difference in cost between years can be affected by when expenses happen within the year. Basically, some costs may fall at the beginning of the year or later in the year, which can impact the major comparisons.
Here we have um. Estimates of fiscal year twenty twenty five general fund revenues and comparisons to their adjusted budgets. As it says in the footnote, um, uh, the second footnote on the on the slide, uh, the adopted, uh, the adjusted budget total. Is the adopted budget total uh plus budget amendments, encumbrances and capital appropriations carried forward from prior fiscal years. And uh again, to remind you, variances negatively impacting fund balances appear in red. And as you can see, general fund revenues overall are expected to fall short of the budget by approximately one point million dollars or one point six percent.
So I'll touch on this revenue table as well. Um, as you'll see that the projection, the projected actual numbers for our our revenues. The variance is slightly uh in. Appropriate to the decline in sales related taxes and UUT, as Mark mentioned previously. And those are numbers we're getting from our city consultants. So those, we've implemented those numbers and updated those from their consultants and their estimations. Although Mister Roberts has noted that. UUT could possibly come in a little bit higher than what we originally anticipated. The other revenue category is showing an increase and that's just, it's not, those are just general fund revenues that aren't specifically identified in the table above. Uh, but they're expected to collectively exceed their budgeted amounts by about two hundred thousand dollars, which is attributable attributable to a combination of projected. Uh, positive and negative variances within those various accounts.
And total general fund expenditures are expected to be less than adjusted budget. Uh, by approximately four hundred thousand dollars or point seven percent overall. With M and O and capital outlay savings more than offsetting the negative variances in the salaries and benefits and debt service categories.
One thing I'll touch on this in the general fund expenses table is the projected actual versus budgeted debt service category. You'll see a a variance of about four hundred thirty three thousand dollars, which is an increase from which we originally budgeted. This is due to the reclassification of a transfer out of the general fund that was being moved to the debt service fund. We're reclassifying that in this mid-year to s- to keep it within the general fund as an expense and not a transfer out. So the and then Mark's, Mister Roberts will be. Discussing that in the next slide and he will mention to you that the change in this expense will be a net decrease to benefiting the general fund.
Adding planned transfers in and out of the general fund to current revenue and expenditure project expenditure projections. The anticipated use of general fund fund balance for fiscal year twenty five is essentially in line with the adjusted budget. Improving slightly from approximately one hundred ninety two thousand to one hundred and thirty three thousand dollars. With respect to the decrease in transfers um out of seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh, as Jacob uh just alluded to, the reclassification of a transfer to another fund for debt service payments. To an expenditure within the general fund will be a net decrease benefiting the general fund. Just to give a little bit of clarification that in some cases, we transfer money for debt service payments from the general fund to other fund. In some cases, we pay that directly from the general fund. That's all we're talking about here is is changing something that was transferred to another fund. Uh, and just keeping that as an expense at it within the general fund. It also happens that the total that was required for that specific debt debt service was less than anticipated. So there was a net de- decrease in the uh impact of debt service uh upon the general fund. Um, in relation to the total budget of sixty two point three million dollars. A projected use fu- uh, a fund balance of a hundred and thirty four thousand dollars is very small, about two tenths of one percent to be exact. Uh, therefore, activities through the main remainder of the year may reduce this amount to zero uh to zero. Making an increased general fund appropriation unnecessary. Including, as noted previously, a possible increase in utility users' tax revenues over the current projection. In addition, the projected excess of workers' compensation benefit expenditures over their budgeted amount. Is greater than the currently projected overall shortfall. Uh, thus, this amount can be assumed to be attributable to the workers' compensation deficit. And as a result, may be absorbed by XX Workers' Compensation Fund, Fund Balance if needed. For these reasons, at this time, staff is not recommending a supplemental appropriation request, uh supplemental appropriation. Beyond those detailed um in the supplemental appropriation request schedule and which we're about to review um next.
Counsel, before we review that really quick, so this is sort of the bottom line. Our current projection is at the end of this fiscal year, June thirty of this year. We're currently saying we think we're going to be about short a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars, but we're not saying you should do anything about it now because, for example, if. UUT revenue comes in higher, it might just wipe that out. So we'll deal with it at the end of the year. My question to you is, are you good with the presentation at this point? Do you have questions? Or do you want us to continue with the specific appropriations that we have in the next series of slides? I know it's late. I don't know what your interest is.
I mean, I think uh one of the things that I had asked uh the city manager when we had our one-on-one was that this projection. Of the deficit includes the actions that this council's taken in the last couple of months, in particular dealing. Figuring out the backfill of the encampment, right? The choices we made to add this, to add that, or to take. Plan A, B, C, whatever. So that is incorporating our deficit.
It it is not.
It is not.
So so that, your motion in March to go ahead and fund the encampment for the next twelve months or so. The largest portion of that's going to be eaten up in next year's budget. There's a small portion of that that's eaten up between now and the end of June. That number is somewhere between a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. We didn't include that number in here. We're still moving all that forward. We didn't include that number here because we're still ground truthing to see if we can actually reduce that cost. And we're waiting to see what happens with the UUT. So. Worst case scenario, that number would be two hundred, instead of one thirty three, it'd be two eighty. Best case scenario, we might wipe that number out completely, but we'll have that for you at the end of the year.
So we could, worst case scenario, two eighty and and worst case, I mean, best case scenario, then two eighty would be wiped out. So it can, so that's a big swing. And um, so but but is that the only uh additional cost from the encampment, not from. Us taking care of Zoom Hall Park?
All that stuff's already, all that's already.
That's already in there? The uh picking up the uh cost for vendors and this and that?
If if I may, just to clarify, uh, notwithstanding uh the number regarding the the operational plan for the. Uh, for the homeless, uh, the homeless uh encampment operations, uh, that number is a is an educated estimate. It it itself could go either way if things go awry at the end of the fiscal year. The economy could tank. And we have less revenues than expected. We could have a lot more in utility user revenues than we expected. We don't know what the impact of this cap is going to be. And some up and and, you know, some other revenues could come through more strongly. So I just want to clarify that we're not saying, we're saying all else equal. The one thirty three plus the one fifty would put us at about two eighty. Or we could wipe it out completely and even end up in a surp- in in a surplus, but we could also be a little bit higher. Uh, uh, than two eighty as a deficit if some things happen that are worse than we anticipated. So again, it is it is an estimate, just like a budget. Is an estimate. So I wanted to clarify uh that before we move on.
So just so that we have an understanding, at least I have an understanding that from this point forward, if things come back. If things come to council about trying to use our general fund to do this or do that, then that's going to continue to add. To the deficit. So if there's something that comes up.
Yeah, so I'll give you an example. So we're going to bring to you probably the first meeting in May, the proposed operator agreement for the homeless shelter, right? That one, we're going to be showing you, okay, you know, we've got X dollars planned. We don't have all the money necessary for it, so we're going to be recommending we use some general fund surplus reserves to offset that cost. But that won't be part of this budget discussion. That'll be part of next year's budget discussion.
Right, but there could be something that we don't know could come up between now and the fiscal year that.
Oh, it could, yeah. In the next three months, something could come up. We're not anticipating it, but that's why these are all snapshots in time.
Right, and and I think, and then the 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 last point is, as we begin the new fiscal year budget process, would. It'd be, uh, oh, I mean, would staff be able to, as part of that process, just kind of give us a another snapshot? Say as we as we begin to try to adopt next year's fiscal budget between now and June thirty. That there is also, let's say, for example, in the May or June, you bring back another snapshot instead of waiting till the end of June. Does that?
I don't know that we're gonna, we we will bring you end of the year cleanup. I don't know that we're gonna. Give you another, because we're really focused, after tonight, we're focused all on next year's budget. So. We'll do the best we can. I just don't know that I can commit to giving you another snapshot until we clean up at the end of the year. But it kind of depends on where Mark is at. With the the projected budget for next year, yeah.
Uh, ye- yes, that's correct. Uh, you know, it's possible we could provide you a a status as of a certain date. Uh, which which wouldn't be that difficult, but projection is is really a lot of work. It really involves all departments. Uh, you know, looking, looking at their budgets, the what they're spending, the revenues. Uh, that they're responsible or have some affiliation, you know, for uh for generating. Uh, so it 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 is a rather cumbersome, laborious process. This is a uh, a. Few week process, if you will, to put together, but it would not be that difficult to give you a a snapshot in time. But it wouldn't necessarily be looking forward at that po- at that point.
What's uh, what's counsel's wishes on city major's suggestion?
I mean, I I can summarize by saying, we've largely, we be in the general fund, which is the primary operating fund of the city, of course. We essentially covered uh. We essentially covered uh the most significant portion, which is that reclassification of the expenditures from transfers to uh. Uh, to expenses, we're moving the the grant funds and the associated expenses for the firefighters. From the general fund to a newly created grant fund, uh, there's a few s- small adjustments in some in some other. Very small adjustments in some other accounts, um, and then there's some other cleanup items. Really, it's it's nothing complicated or complex, uh, but I I don't necessarily see need to go through it unless it is really council's desire. If uh, if you want to quickly peruse it, let me know if there's something you'd like me to address specifically, I could. It's in the staff report.
Is this those slides where certain departments are asking for certain things, is that the supplemental?
No, that's for next year's budget, if you look at your staff report, you see everything he's talking, it'll come up, it's up to you if you want to spend the next ten minutes going over it or not.
What I, what I'd, I'd suggest is that we've, we've gotten the explanation and the overview that Mark has given us and. And you've ind- indicated, um, we have the materials, we we can, we could take a look at the balance of it. And if we have any questions individually, we can set up a meeting to discuss them.
Yep.
That probably would be fairer to, more more fair to everybody as opposed to continuing.
Well, thi- this is, this is what he's showing is what I was asking, is in my staff report that these are requests from certain departments, like for example. I had a question about the senior services fund. That, you know, there is an increase as in the slide there, that there is an increase for more additional meals, I mean, is that. Something that the department, the parks, the community services director and his department see that growing? Given the economy, given the stuff, is that, is that something?
You're you're kind of, you're kind of asking us a question for next year.
Well, so this is next year, so.
No, this is for now, but for example, next year's budget, like if we get. I don't know that we're going to grow over the next three months, but I could tell you, for example, next year, we're going to, they're going to give us, they're going to give us a million dollars instead of seven hundred, so like. That that's why I'm saying, do you want to get into all of this? If you do, we can, but we're going to be here for a little bit longer.
Well, I mean, I think some some people want to go home and, I mean.
Well, I tell you what, if I can have five minutes, I think I can get through all these slides, if not less. Does that work? If I'm, if I can be quick.
I mean, I don't think there's any need if we're not going to ask questions, I mean, if people want to go home, cool, great, but uh. I'll just figure out questions later.
Could you?
Vanquished, each individual counts, we can do one of two things. We can sit here and go ahead and go through all of this, ask the questions, or we have the materials. Go through it and sit down individually with with our chief financial officer and the city manager and get clarification on.
Well, I mean, I'm not necessarily worried about me, I'm worried if 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 any member of the public can call the city manager and ask for the same presentation. I mean, this is, I I mean, a lot of folks in my district, believe it or not, watch these meetings online, so if we're going to cut it short. And they don't get the full tra- they don't get the full presentation, then what mechanism is there for them to follow up? I mean, that's all I'm asking, because.
All of this is.
People watching online.
It's in the staff report and it it's subject to a Public Records Act, I mean, this is all available.
And their me- their mechanism truly would be to reach out to their council representative.
If I may say, however, there is nothing that absolutely requires that you adopt these tonight. You've seen the presentation, you've heard the presentation, I'm happy to sit down with you individually, with or without the city manager, at the city manager's discretion, of course. Uh, and we could bring the resolution for the adjustment back at the next meeting without any undue difficulty, so if if that's council's preference. And the city manager is okay with my saying, so then uh that's that's certainly okay, these are not ultra-time sensitive uh matters.
Yeah, again, you'd like us to walk you through some council, we can, we can do that tonight, I was just trying to save time.
No.
Because I'm hearing people saying we're tired.
Mark's not going to be here uh next meeting, but there's no reason why at the next meeting, we don't do the balance of this. So that we can have the public be aware of what the balance of this presentation is. If that's what you want, Mr. Sagala.
People want to go home, so we'll go.
Wait, he's, he's, are you pouting now, Mr. Sagala, is that what you're doing? Well, then tell, tell us whether that's satisfactory or not, because you're you're taking your charger and you're throwing your thing, I mean, what are you doing here?
All right, uh, we're going to table this until the next meeting.
Okay, we can finish the present.
Finish the presentation then, since there is no time constraints on it, correct, Mark?
That that is correct, yes.
Fine, it's tabled. Thank you. That ends our agenda items, I'm going to go a little bit out of order here and have our city manager introduce the uh gentleman setting at the end over here that. Most of us have met, but I don't think anybody else really knows who he is or what he does. Sure, thank you so much, Mr. Vice Mayor, so uh, Thomas Geffrey, if you just raise your hand for a second, so there we are, he is our new assistant city manager. Uh, we're certainly grateful to have him with us, he started on Monday, he comes to us by way, most recently of. Fowler as the interim city manager and previously as the deputy city manager in Fresno, has a lot of experience in our university system and. Has a whole slew of experience and a variety of governmental functions, and so again, we're we're lucky to have him. Uh, Thomas, any words that you want to share with the public?
Thank you, let's go home.
Welcome aboard, Thomas. Mark, anything?
Just Mark, uh, no, not, nothing else.
Michael?
Be real quick, we were successful in getting an H S I P grant for pedestrian activated rapid flashing blinkers. At the Santa Fe Trail crossings of Tulare Drive, E Street, M Street, Cherry Street, Blackstone and Las Spina Street.
Great, great, great. Tricia?
Just real quick, um, you all probably got the notices in your mail, but we are in the middle of a Prop two eighteen. Process for solid waste rate increases, so uh the mailers went out on March twenty seventh. The hearing is scheduled for May fifteenth at four o'clock P M at a Board of Public Utilities meeting, thank you.
Chris?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Are you?
Just a few items, um, we are in the middle of our C D B G, where actually we just started it today, C D B G um. Public review period for the consolidated plan, basically what we're going to do with our C D B G funds for the next five years and what we're going to prioritize. Public workshops are scheduled for April eighth and then here with council, April fifteenth and finally adoption, May sixth. Um, we also have our active transportation plan we're working on and we're in the midst of scheduling a community bike and walk on April twenty sixth. Uh, to better inform that plan, thank you.
Shawna?
Nothing to report.
G five?
Uh, we debate, but notices have gone out, a lot of residents are already complying, which is fantastic, so hopefully we'll keep our vegetation fires down. And our uh horrific twelve firefighters are still going good in the academy.
That's great. Captain Merrill?
Nothing to report.
Yep, one more thing really quick, um, tomorrow you'll, I'll be issuing a public announcement of our newest hire. Jennifer Gomez, who's sitting in the audience, Jennifer, did you raise your hand? She is our new executive director of economic development and redevelopment, she'll be starting on Monday. We're fortunate and lucky to have Jennifer, as you know, Jennifer was most recently the city manager in the city of Farmersville, she is currently. Working with the city of Isalia and will soon be here with us. We're excited about her getting going and getting our economic development efforts moving forward, she'll be working closely with Gladys, Thomas and I. Uh, and I know council has a number of projects and issues that they would like addressed, so feel free to reach out to her, she'll be. In city hall on the second floor temporarily and then her and Gladys will move over mid-April or so to the business incubator. Well, she could have set up here tonight. Uh, she'll officially be on Monday. Megan?
Nothing to report.
Okay, well. Well, it was projected to be eleven thirty, I believe. And I missed my nine o'clock one, but it's quarter to eleven, so at that, this meeting is adjourned.